The next fifteen minutes can be the difference in like significant difference in disability and stuff.
That's scary. How do we create more nurses?
So I had to have a test on me something. Place I had it done.
It is six P M. On this Thursday, December eighth. All this Lacey City Council work session to order. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there any changes?
Yeah.
So we're going to adjourn to a closed session. Okay, uh, following this work session, we're going to be adjourning to a closed session. I'll add that to the agenda. So just for clarification, that's under the authority of R C W forty-two thirty-one forty, paragraph four B. Uh, for purpose of collecting bargaining sessions to review the proposals made in negotiations.
I would move approval of the amended agenda second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Excellent. Question for clarification. What is the difference in a closed meeting and an executive meeting?
That's a great question. So a closed section or closed session is not subject to O P M A. And so it's exempt as one of the few exemptions to O P M A. So it doesn't follow the executive session, which is still part of O P M A.
Oh, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? CNN, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Certainly when opposed. Motion to approve our amended agenda has passed unanimously. First up on amended agenda is our great Kyo Park Phase One. One A.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Um. Thanks for the opportunity. Um, hi Brett. Oh, good. There's Brett. And we have Juliette Bong to H B B. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a an overdue update on the great Kyo Park Phase One A project. Um, I do have Juliette who's going to do the majority of the briefing, but I do want to make sure and share uh, the grant application information with you. So take it away, Julia.
Thank you. I'm gonna move myself out of the way here uh, and share my screen. All right, everyone should be able to see the presentation.
We can.
Awesome. Okay. Um, and Jen, as usual, I uh, am really lousy at tracking hands raised or comments put in while doing these presentations. So either please feel free to speak up to interrupt, um, or Jen can um, interrupt me if there's conversations or discussion to have along the way. Um, so as, excuse me, Jen mentioned, um, we have a lot of information you've probably seen before. So I'm going to cruise uh, fast through the introduction. Um, and just a couple of slides that we like to continually bring in as part of these presentations to remind us of where we've been. Um, and then we're going to really focus on those pho- phase one A improvements. Um, we did have a meeting with the neighbors in an open house. We'll give you a short debrief of that and then look at our grant funding um, and our next steps. This is really intended to be an update as we've progressed through that last public meeting. Um, we're in design, so things can sometimes shift around a little bit in design. So we've planned to have a couple of these check-in points just to make sure we have um, the opportunity to inform you if anything does change along the way. So starting off, excuse me, our master plan um, was a highly integrated process, a lot of community outreach and feedback to go from that big visioning of what do we want to do with this property, um, all the way to a preferred and then a final master plan. Throughout that, it's really been important to keep in mind and we constantly try to revisit revisit what that park vision was established in the early phases. That is to preserve the open space, water quality protection, enhance the natural environment. But in doing so, while balancing the opportunities that we have for people to actually be able to experience this amazing site and to facilitate those recreational opportunities as part of the plan. Um, this is the overall master plan. Um, highlighted in the yellow box is what we call the core area. That's where we're going to be focusing most of the rest of the presentation on. Um, we, of course, span Carpenter Road uh, with the park boundary outlined in red and then our yellow circles indicate our major access point. So we have our main entry into the park and right off of Carpenter Road. And our phase one A improvements will be focused in this area as well. The remainder of the site stays as it is in its existing condition until future phases will come along. Um, a little bit of just what those recreational opportunities um, and major key components are and where. Just to kind of give a reminder of what the overall master plan looks like. And then the programming um, and those guiding principles that to been along with our overall vision. Um, and always we've gone through every step it step of the process. We remind ourselves, we remind our community. Um, and collectively just make sure that we're still on track with meeting these goals. You can see in the bubbles, um, the circles off on the left-hand side, just that um, the amount of public feedback and input that we've received throughout that master planning process. So we're going to zoom in now on the phase one A improvements indicated in the yellow box on the left-hand side. And then what we show on this um, bird's eye on the right-hand side is a little bit of what that is intended to look like. So um, the majority of the sort of physical improvements, the parking, the recreation picnic is focused in that open meadow that is currently existing done in very intentionally to um, kind of limit our footprint and our impact on that environment. Um, and so we come in with the park access drive, parking lot monument sign, really sort of the ability to open this up to the public. Flexible lawn space, um, shelter and picnic areas, excuse me. Uh, we are installing a universally accessible playground with accessible play elements as part of of this initial phase. Um, and then through the more forested area, we have um, the eighteen uh, holes, the first eighteen holes of our disc golf course that isn't through the forest as well as a couple of holes in that open meadow. Um, and then some additional trail improvements. So in plan view, here is what um, the main recreational um, improvements are in the open meadows. We have our access the top and the parking. Um, Carpenter Road is off to the right, just off this side. There is stormwater, of course, associated with that. We are building out the stormwater to uh, be able to modify it easily as the the park expands in the future. So we're doing a little bit of that forward compatibility as part of our design. Um, what we really want to focus here is the accessible path off the parking. The loop pit path here will be completely accessible with some smaller loops as well. So that gives a variety of accessibility and mobility options. We have a large group shelter. Some open picnic tables, some seating areas, and then our playground. Um, we're shifting, I think, the playground a little bit further to the north, but it's essentially in the in a very similar configuration as to what you see here. Um, we're building in some topography into that playground to support universal play, which essentially means that it's not just about having accessibility to the playground, but making the accessible play features um, as central uh, as the the less accessible ones, so that the coolest thing in the playground is the accessible features and that there's a lot of opportunity for a variety of um, ages, ranges, and um, different mobility or other types of challenges that um, that kids might have. Um, this on the, excuse me, on the left-hand side is the disc golf course um, overlaid with the trails through the rest of the phase one A improvements. In the bright yellow are those accessible paths that I just referred to. And then the disc golf course itself highlighted in this version with a little example of the primary path being the main um, route through the through and connecting um, the various elements of the disc golf course. Uh, and a little bit of how that is situated and separated off from that main path. All of the actual disc golf tees and fairways are going away from the main path. So there's very little um, opportunity for direct conflicts. And then we've been working um, actually very intensively with the local disc golf association, but actually a national expert that has some roots in Lacey as well has come in and helped us do an evaluation. Kind of a third-party evaluation of the course as well. So really, really careful on the round sighting of um, of the disc golf course as we've proceeded through design.
Julia, before you move off this slide, um. In the middle of the disco of course, there are two sort of circular or oval areas. In the center of those, are those ponds? What are those?
Those are wetlands. Yep. So uh, yep. So the hatched area here is the wetland. You can barely see a little bit of a dashed outline that forms those two circles. That is the wetland boundary. And then the more solid kind of faint lines are the trails. So the trail skirts just along the edges of the wetlands. We are allowed to encroach just a tiny little bit. Um, we're kind of working through some of the elements, but we can move through the very edges of these wetlands with um, impervious. Uh, just kind of mulch type trails. Excuse me. And then all the gra- the crushed rock gravel trails um, are all outside of all the invar- the sensitive areas and their buffers.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, if you notice on here and you might be curious, there's a couple of alternate designated um, holes as well. We are again part of that forward compatibility. Thinking about future use and future shifting of trails. Eventually this upper route um, as someday will become um, the the um, emergency access connection through to thirty-first. And at that point in time, there's likely going to be some shifting of those upper um uh, courses. So constantly thinking about how we can build in that forward compatibility now. Um, we have three different levels of trail shown on this slide. The primary um, is uh, ten feet wide. That allows us maintenance access. Um, those are going to be the more accessible. It is still a crushed rock path, but they give them enough space for multi-use um, and for some of that maintenance um, activities. There's a little emergency and maintenance turnaround up in the very north. Um, what is this northeast corner of the site? Um, to again facilitate even further emergency access into the zone. And that's that future intersection with thirty-first. There are secondary trails shown and then what we're calling informal trails, which is that connection, anything that goes through the wetland buffer itself is just a mulch only, whereas the rest of them are crushed rock of various widths. Quick views and photos of what toes look like and just sort of the difference in scale as you move down. And then a couple of examples of what the shelters and picnic tables um, and a little bit closer up view of that rendering. The playground, uh, when we last talked, we had a very um, had identified through our public process, the vision for the playground being universally accessible, iconic. This is really an opportunity to do something fun and unique for the city. And so uh, we also in this forward compatibility, thinking of not just the portion we're installing now, but the future, um, we have three potential phases as that um, playground area expands. And so we came up with a couple of different character options. A lot of the open house was around trying to get some feedback on what type of character people wanted to see for the play. And so there was a lot more uh, examples and photos, but this narrowed down into those three options that we discussed. We met with the neighbors and walked through all of essentially the same as what we just presented with you. Um, there were a lot of questions and concerns about just that interface between the park and the private property. What's the security? What happens if type discussions? And I think those will continue to be ongoing um, about just how the park is managed and what the response is if something happens in the park or if there's something that transcends from the park onto those private properties. Um, the key element, I think, is part of those discussions was that the entire park boundary is not fenced. It is not intended to be fenced along all those property boundaries. This is just a very large site. Um, and so there was some discussion around that.
And Juliette, I'll just chime in for a moment. Um, this neighbor meeting was just the immediate neighbors around phase one A. So this was a more limited um, meeting with neighbors.
And what you can see on the right-hand side here, everything in this, every everything in yellow faded or dark um, is who was um, invited to attend this meeting. So you can see anywhere that just had actual residences that abutted or were nearly abutting the park. Um, and then the darker yellow are the ones who attended. The only other caveat I'll say is I think we got an email um, who could attend, but provided some comments and email from the property to the north as well.
Yeah, actually Brett and I went out and met with that neighbor.
Perfect. We then had an open house. Um, and so this was our first hybrid. Uh, pretty cool. I thought it actually went really well. We had forty-three participants, um, twenty-nine direct comments through the Zoom link. Um, and then um, had a really good discussion um, both in person and uh, with the the voice from above coming through on the speakers. So it's kind of fun. Um, we also concurrent with the physical open house and the online open house, we released our online survey um, and that, of course, got a lot of great response. We had five hundred and sixty responses to that last um, public survey and an overwhelming support for the the trees and the nature concept, which um, was both in the survey, but also I think the primary uh, preference from those who attended in person or on the hybrid format as well. All right, thirty percent design um, is complete. We've gone through overview process and we're moving into ninety percent. We really just wanted to say we're still on target within our original cost range. Um, and then uh, we have some updates on the grant funding. Jen, do you want to take this part?
Yes, please. Thanks. Um. So we applied for two different grant cat- categories through the Recreation and Conservation Office of Washington State. And that's the top bullet point, the um, W W R P Local Parks category. Uh, we were eligible to apply for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, for that, uh, we were, we ranked pretty successfully there. We were ranked eighteenth out of fifty-nine projects. And so for our project to get funded, this category needs at least um, ten point two million dollars allocated in funding. And in the last cycle, which was in twenty-twenty, this local parks category was awarded twelve point nine million in grant funding. And so um, our grant manager is telling us it's highly likely that this will get funded at the five hundred thousand dollar level. Um, we were not uh, ranked as well in the next category, which is L W C F. That's the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and that's through uh, comes, it's federal dollars that come through the state from national parks. So that was the big one we applied for, which was um, the two mil- till two million dollars. We ranked fifteen out of twenty-five. Um, for our project to get funded, the category would need at least nineteen million dollars uh, in funding and R C O is expecting about eleven or twelve million. Um, they did say though, that some of the projects may miss the mark. So there might be some movement, you know, within that list. Um, so we just kind of have to wait and see. Um, and to compare it to the last cycle, which again was in twenty-twenty, all the L W C F projects got funded. Um, but since then, R C O raised the maximum limit to two million dollars, which is why we were able to apply for so much. Um, but it just made the dollars uh, um. Uh, it made it so that not as many projects would actually get funded. Um, and so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, last cycle to this cycle. Uh, but if um, if for some reason it gets funded at 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 least the nineteen million dollar level, um, then our project is in there. So uh, and then the legacy grant was something we were really hopeful. Um, it's another program through L W C F coming through national parks and we thought in our grant um, manager thought that we were going to be super competitive in this category, but national parks changed the uh, eligibility requirements this year. And so we did not have enough households below the poverty rate uh, census tracts that were are around this particular park properties. Um. And so unfortunately, we were not eligible to even try. And this is the one that you can apply for up to ten million dollars. So that was, that was unfortunate. Um, we did, as you see, as you did see in the legislative agenda, um, put in a request for five hundred thousand dollars for some of the ADA components of the phase one A, which is the paved um, pathways for accessibility and also the accessible playground. And so um, you know, of course, it's pending approval of the Washington State capital budget. Um. And then we do have interest from Lacey Rotary. So I need to circle back to them and see if that's something um, that their club is still interested uh, in. And so that's a funding opportunity summary. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Jen?
Um, if we aren't, if we don't make the list for the L W C F grant this year, is there a contingency process where they follow up next year? Or do we have to wait two years to try again?
Um. This one is annual, man, at least, and it has been in the past, although again, they can change criteria. Um, but the Land and Water Conservation Fund is typically an annual grant.
Well, um, hmm, so the legacy one or the?
No, not the legacy, the the regular Land and Water Conservation Fund. Now, they they have changed it and they have made exceptions where they haven't done it and they have flipped it to every two years.
Yeah, it's uh, it's every two years.
It is every two years now as well?
Yeah, it's two years. Um. So. Yeah, so it is every two years. I do know that last cycle, though, all the projects get got funded. I want to say that some of them came a little bit later. Um, although I would have to check on that to be sure.
So we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yes.
And there's always future phases.
So Jen, are you, are you going to reach out to the Lacey Community Foundation, see if they're going to apply for any grants for for this project?
Um, I I can do that. I wasn't planning to for this, just because they're still getting legs underneath them.
Sure. Well, I just wasn't sure. I mean, obviously they have, they have their five oh and C three status now, so they can apply for grants. And so I don't, I mean, I know they're still early on, but you know, there's some low, low-hanging fruit that the foundation can work with, maybe our grant writer on on some grants that the city can't apply for, but the foundation can. Maybe we should do that.
Uh, yeah, I can absolutely check.
Other questions on the funding before we move on? All right. Uh, and conveniently, any other questions on the phase one improvements? All right. Um, so our next steps, this is our schedule. We are um, completed thirty percent design. We're moving into ninety percent design. Uh, ninety percent design will be wrapping up towards the beginning of next quarter or next year. Uh, and then we submit for permits. Um, permitting, we're expecting four to six months. That still is a little bit pending in there. And then we finalize design um, to respond to any of those permit comments. And then you can see advertising and the um, bidding process. So we do continue to track those R C O grants. Uh, we're at basically just the notice of ranking that Jen walked through. So that's kind of why there we're, we're a little bit on the likely and unlikely categories until, of course, it gets through all the legislative actions. But those awards typically are available around September um, of that following year. So that should work quite nicely with our contract award and bidding happening um, right after in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three. In that way, we are intending to start construction in early twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the last thing, we just want to remind everybody, um, anybody that might be watching, but also um, uh, just as you communicate and people ask and talk about this. We do, of course, still have the project website that we can direct people to, but we are starting to shift. And um, also, uh, and eventually prioritizing uh, those interests and directing people to the construction updates uh, portion of the website. Um, once we get into construction, they can get on the list and that way they can be notified uh, on regular updates on the construction process, particularly for those who live nearby. But also it's a great way to just follow how the progression of design and construction is going. So both are now up and running. Um, and we do recommend people as we have uh, these conversations with neighbors to to start to shift them a bit more towards those construction updates. And I think that is my last um notice, or my not my last point. Um, is there any other questions?
Go for it.
Oh, good.
Don't just say go for it.
Thank you.
I think our next checkpoint is anticipated after we get permit comments, because that's the other, I mean, Jim does make regular updates, I'm sure, in between. But if there are going to be any shifts in site design or anything else that might come up, that's about the time that those sorts of shifts would happen. So I would expect if not sooner than um, some updates at that point in time, just to make, so you know what, we're on the same track.
And I, I just want to mention that the park board has received the same date and um, also just want to thank H B B for all their efforts and also Brett with our capital projects team and public works. Thank you, Brett, for all your hard work on this project.
We don't get to see Ashley anymore, but I'm going to put my shout out to an amazing project manager as well. Um, been working with uh, everybody at the city. It's been fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
So uh, next up on our agenda is the Franz Anderson Road permanent supportive housing project.
Good evening, council. The writer, uh, will be joined in by um, Tom Webster, who's our program manager at Thurston County Public Building's Social Services, as well as Jacinda Stiltsus, who's the Housing Program Manager at Thurston County. And also Darian Light, who's the um, Housing Programs Manager from the City of Olympia. And so I know we have a busy agenda, so I'll be fairly quick before I hand it off to uh, Jacinda and Darian for the more detailed uh, briefings. But tonight, we're going to be talking about an overview of the proposed project uh, for permanent supporting housing at the Franz Anderson Road Site in Olympia. If you recall, uh, last Thursday, December first, the uh, hearing on the proposed uh, twenty-twenty-three budget. The topic of uh, participating in this regional project uh, came up and the question was whether council would want to allocate uh, three and a half million dollars into the twenty-twenty-three budget towards this regional project in partnership with Thurston County, Olympia, and Tom Water. Um, and of course, this, this, this will not fully fund the project. This is an effort to create local dollars, to create uh, basically a a match for other state funding sources. That'll be coming online through the the coming year, which uh, Jacinda will highlight. And um, um, but we wanted, the council conversation last Thursday was uh, the request to get a briefing on the project itself before you went ahead and consider that the request for three and a half million dollars in next year's budget uh, formally at next week's uh, scheduled budget adoption. Uh, so again, with that, um, uh, tonight, again, is after the presentation, we have some question and answer, and we're looking for that uh, direct council action to to move forward with uh, including this proposal in the budget. So with that, Jacinda, would you want to read off with the presentation?
Uh, good evening, council. Um, hello, Rick. Nice to see you again. And Rick, I uh, I can sh- can I share my screen for this?
Share your screen and or we can pull it up on our end if you need to.
Okay, um, I'm assuming if you guys pull it up on your end, I'm not going to be able to see it as well.
Right.
Okay, I will, I will try sharing. Um, I will ask uh, Darian and Tom, um, maybe or and you too, Rick, to just kind of let me know if there's hands up for questions. Um, I don't think I'll be able to see you all as well. All right. Is it coming through? Okay?
We can see it.
All right. So, um, excuse me, and I have a little bit of a cold too, so I'll try not to pack up everything in this presentation. And Franz Anderson, a little bit of background, I'm I'm sure uh, you all are at least vaguely familiar, so I won't go too far into the background. Um, but this is a property that the City of Olympia and Thurston County um, partnered using um, ARPA funds earlier this year to purchase. Um, it's a fairly large property. And I'm on one side of uh, with kind of an access road down the middle there. And on um, one side of that road, there is some plans for a tiny house village. And on the other side is uh, the Franz Anderson project that we're talking about today, or proposed is the Franz Anderson project. And so just a little bit of a map to orient you all with that. And then the primary goals for that property again, and that tiny home village, approximately fifty units. And the property is legally owned by City of Olympia. And so that would be a project that City of Olympia is working with um, Department of Commerce, actually. And through the Rights of Way Initiative to get that stood up. And then on the other side again of um, that road on the west side is where the permanent supportive housing uh, project is proposed to occur. They won't read this, this whole slide, um, but did want to put this in there for anyone who um, just wanted something quick to refer back to in terms of what is permanent supportive housing.
Jacinda, is it possible to get full, full slide there?
Yeah, sorry about that, y'all. I just, I just realized, like, wait a minute. Um, yes, and let me know if it's, if I need to do anything else to make it a little bit easier to to see. And oops. So, so this slide is, um, you know, it's kind of, some of this is proposed, so we're looking at a new construction. Uh, we would estimate a forty to seventy units. Um, you know, as we get further along, that'll kind of be dialed in a little bit more. Um, but again, multifamily rental, permanent supportive housing units. Um, the proposed population to be served. And the proposed population to be served is low income, single adults, primarily homeless. And then do want to just note, there are several other projects that are in the works, including some senior projects directed at other high priority populations. And so that, that single adults population is one that we felt, sorry, the regional housing council tech team felt was best for this property. And the developer is at this point to be determined. So the process for selecting that developer, which is a, a fairly common process for, um, you know, situations where a public entity owns a property, but is, is not willing to necessarily develop it, is to put out a request for proposals and is in the attempt to attract a developer that would be willing to develop and, and operate. And so the, the city as a legal owner, um, you know, some of that risk is removed from them and from funders in that that developer will do the, the construction, they will chase the rest of the money and ultimately operate. Um, city of Olympia will put out that RFP as a legal owner in early two thousand and twenty-three. And then this twenty-three million again is an estimate, and that number is based off of similar projects of that unit size and type that have happened in the state and in our community in the last few years. And so do you want to take some time to kind of answer or keep in mind why this project and why now? And as I mentioned before, you know, there is a gap in the housing market or that, you know, the options that we have with housing for this population. Excuse me, and city of Olympia already owns a property. When we're talking about development, that property purchase can be a, a big share of the cost. So that's really important to keep in mind. And then based on, and we'll get, I'll, I'll cover some funding sources here in a little bit here. And but based on the population served, so literally homeless, and, and and the ask that we have of the jurisdictions for local leverage, we do anticipate that the project would score fairly high and state competitive funding rounds. And again, I'll briefly cover those in coming slides. And, you know, location is, it's close to services, close to bus line. And offers a continuum of housing for those that are exiting the tiny house village just right across the way. And in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe, September of two thousand and twenty-one, the regional housing council adopted a permanent supportive housing framework that calls for construction of approximately, I think we said two hundred and fifty permanent supportive housing units by two thousand and twenty-four. And so certainly, you know, this aligns with that goal as well. And this is another theoretical slide, but wanted to give you all, uh, you know, a high overview of what funding could look like. And Thurston County is still, you know, in our budget conversations as well. But our office of housing and homeless prevention felt fairly confident that that three point five coming from the county in ARPA is fairly realistic. And, you know, the ask here or the presentation here is three point five from city of Lacey. Tonne Water has about five hundred and fifty thousand in their ARPA funding. And I will be presenting to them next week on the project as well. And there's a potential for the developer, after that is selected, to go in and apply for the combined Thurston County and Olympia Home Fund. And then again, based on the population served and local leverage. And it isn't a stretch to be looking at that housing trust fund at that three to five, excuse me, not percent, three to five million range and that estate funding. And then low income housing tax credits, the nine percent program at that six to ten million mark. And so operations, I know, you know, anytime we're talking about developing or being involved in any way in development, on the question of how's it going to be operated comes up. And which it should come up. And want to remind you all that this is not a property that would be operated by regional housing council or city of Olympia, Thurston County, city of Lacey. And the selected developer through that request for proposals ultimately would operate the property, but potential operating sources could include vouchers, could include some nominal rental income. And potentially some rights, rights of way initiative, Apple Health and Homes program. There are a variety of funding sources for operations, but that would not be something that the local jurisdictions would be taking on. I will note just very quickly in this slide, and I'll go over it a little bit more in the next few slides. And but the construction timeline would be around that five to eighteen month. Again, assuming that kind of the final unit count is around that forty to seventy unit, unit count. I try to move you all out of the way so I can see my slides. And so this gives a broad overview of the timeline, and I do want to acknowledge that there's a lot here on this slide. And but I think some of the kind of high level things to point out. And, you know, here we are at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, and we're coming to you all with this project. And it seems like it's really, you know, early. And but the timing, if, if the, if we're wanting to go after some of this state funding, um, the timing to kind of get things in line is now. And so again, in February of next year, Olympia would issue that RFP. Um, spring of next year, select a developer operator. Ideally, before the RFP goes out, we have a, a good sense for how much local commitment. And because that also gives the developer a good sense for how much state funding they're going to need to bring to the table. Spring two thousand and twenty-three, um, you know, tying funding up in agreements and commitments. And then, and then it goes into, you know, really going after the other funding sources. Home fund, so that's our local home fund, late spring, early summer application release with awards announced in August. I'm housing trust fund, that application usually goes live around July. And with the, the proposals due in September and then awards announced in November. And that is an application process that you do score higher and there's kind of a, an entry into the door, so to say, by local funding. So there does need to be some sort of local funding in, kind of even get our foot in the door for housing trust fund. And then next up is the low income housing tax credits. That process usually takes place in October. Mid fall or so, with proposals due in December and awards announced in January. So that'd be January two thousand and twenty-four. And so by January of two thousand and twenty-four, funding would be all lined up. And then that developer would move into, you know, financing the design and permitting. And that January through July timeframe was just completely, you know, I, I went longer than usual, sometimes permitting things come up in permitting. And so that is, there's potential to cut time off there if, um, city of Olympia permitting moves quickly. Fall two thousand and twenty-four, construction start, and then again fifteen to eighteen month timeline for construction. And, you know, taking into account weather and such. So looking at a spring two thousand and twenty-six construction complete, usually another few months to get fully leased up. And so again, you know, it feels like here we are in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're already talking about a project that won't be complete until two thousand and twenty-six. But this is the, this is the timeline that gets us there. Any questions about this one before I move on? And so the other thing that I think is really important to keep in mind in Washington State anyway, when we're talking large projects, multifamily projects, and when we're talking permanent supportive housing projects, these type of projects really don't happen without the housing trust fund and, and or the low income housing tax credit programs. And so it's, you know, that's why those are our big dollar awards. And those are also awards, again, that are looking for local commitments. And there's a higher points allocation dependent upon the population you serve, as well as how much local money is in. And so, you know, just keep in mind that meeting those application deadlines is important. And, and then we do anticipate that there may be other local projects that are applying to those same funding sources in this next year. So again, to avoid competition, or at least decrease it. And the more local money that we can have in, the better opportunity, I guess, there is for several projects to, to potentially move forward. And then again, the last reminder there, again, about the permanent supportive housing framework, and this does align with that framework. Any questions?
I have just one. When you were talking about the funding, the local funding in particular, I may have just missed it, but what was Olympia's contribution to it?
So Olympia has already purchased, partnered with the county to purchase the property. They're also working with the state through the rights of way initiative. And I, and I will let Darian weigh in as well, to bring utilities to the property. And their public works department, I believe, is involved in that as well. And, and Darian, if you have anything you wanted to add, I will make space for you to do that, too.
Yeah, thanks, Jacinda. Currently, to create the tiny home village, extend the road, extend the sidewalk, water, sewer, stormwater and electricity, we have a budgeted about three, three and a half million dollars for those improvements. And the goal of that project is for the tiny home village and then to set the project up for success for the permanent supportive housing. So we're hoping those improvements can be an, an additional appeal for developers when we go into RFP that we have made these improvements, the road's been extended, here's additional funds that will go along with RFP, and we'll get a lot of, of applicants.
Now, if I can just add on to it, just kind of a little bit of context, and the, the benefit we're seeing with this right away initiative, the council remembers about a year ago, the council was talking about a partnership with Thurston County to acquire the hotel, hotel and putting substantial amount of money towards that. But the right away initiative, and Olympia had purchased this property with the, with the idea of a long-term development. With the right away initiative dollars coming in, that fully funded that hotel acquisition and also helped fund the tiny village. And so this is an opportunity to reposition those dollars to add more units in what was initially originally anticipated last year. So this is one of those things where we got an opportunity with the state funding coming in, it kind of gives another, another opportunity to look at more additional more resorted housing. And also with the tiny village project that Olympia's working on with the state. You know, as we talked about that continuing care, we're starting to see different tiers of that infrastructure that needs for the stepping stones, if you will, for continuum care and supporting of those exiting homelessness into shelter services and eventually into longer term stabilized housing.
Any other questions?
Just gonna say, I, I welcome Jacinda's coworker. It's nice to see him.
Do you have anything, Councilor?
No, I just, I really appreciate you all coming and explaining this to the rest of the council tonight. I know it's a lot to take in, and there's lots of moving parts. And I think it's a really, really important project for us to go behind. Thank you.
Did we talk about who is going to manage this community that we're creating?
We don't know yet, though.
Yeah, they've mentioned it's a TBD.
To be determined.
So the idea would be under this, Jacinda or Jack and Philin, but the idea behind this is we get the, the the local dollars leveraged towards the product to match, if you will, then we'll go out for an RFP to solicit a developer who'll come in, look at that dollar commitment, then they'll lower selected as a developer, would then have the responsibility to go after the state funding. And, and then ultimately the operational dollars as well. So once that project developer selected, then there will be those next stages that will be the responsibility of that selected developer.
And then who makes that decision? There, you know, add something to that? Thank you, Darian.
Yeah, you know, so that is the typical standard for permanent supportive housing. A housing provider will partner with the, with the construction company. So like the landing, the family support center project that's in West Olympia right now. Bellwether and Walsh Construction are the building, the building developers. They're constructing the site, but they are partnering with Family Support Center as that nonprofit and subject matter expert to be able to go in for the state and federal funding that will operate the site. So it's a in tandem application. And with the, with the intention that the developer and the contractor will build the site, partnering with the nonprofit provider to operate the site. So those will both be taken into consideration when we release this RFP.
What happens with the local funding if they're not able to get the state funding, if they can't get the money on the trust fund, the low income housing tax credit, all of that?
Usually is what, excuse me, is what happens when the developer is applying to the state funding, they need to show a a letter of commitment. They don't need to have funds in their account, per se. Funds would be transferred over through an escrow and closing process with that third party. And so what they need is just a, a commitment that if they're able to attract the other funding and fully fund the project and that that local funding would come through.
But I think he's asking is, is what happens if they go out for the RFP and no one, no one cites?
Never get transferred, because it's only a letter of commitment. If they don't get the funding, the money stays with the city.
Right. So what, and, and what we would do if it's budgeted for two thousand and twenty-three, we'll be able to produce a letter that these funds are committed to this project contingent upon. And then, and then ultimately, at the point where they're ready, everything comes together, the funding's all complete, then we enter into an interlocal agreement for the transfer of those funds, and that's be the point where I come back to council to approve that interlocal agreement. If they go forward or they're not successful in those applications for the various funding sources, the, the various partners will still retain their money, and we'll have to figure out how best to utilize that money.
Tom, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think the, the combination of the city of Olympia owning this property and the, the potential for the amount of local leverage that we go into this property along with the site improvements, we think will be really attractive to developers and nonprofits. And I, I'm optimistic that we'll have several competitive proposals from developers, and we'll have a real opportunity as a region to look at those and pick a really strong proposal. So I think by owning the land and with the amount of local leverage that we are hopeful to bring to this property that we think will be able to attract strong proposals from a multiple number of, of qualified applicants. And so we'll have a real opportunity to choose a, a project that works best for our region. So.
Yeah, and I, I want to, I want to add to what Tom said. This is a six point two park, acre parcel. And so I, the first phase of the development will be that forty to seventy units, like Jacinda said. But we're really anticipating a two and three phased project. Once the tiny home village will transfer in, folks will transfer into the permanent supportive housing, that parcel across the way will also be developed. So as this, you know, your leverage is going to entice hopefully a two and three phased project because we own the land, because we're being competitive with this initial funding, just like Tom had mentioned.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I'm really happy about this turn of events. Obviously, when we got started on this, we thought we were going to be adding a hundred and twenty units of permanent supportive housing in our area. Thanks to the, the local right of way, you can add that hundred and twenty plus another sixty to forty plus, hopefully set ourselves up for even more phases. Because we, we definitely need more than a hundred and fifty permanent supportive housing units in our Because uh we we definitely need more than a hundred and fifty permanent supportive housing units in our area. I mean, we, I I think we need significantly more than that. And so this is um getting us there um and uh I I appreciate that. You know, we're taking some on here in Lacey and that Olympia's obviously taking some on in this. And I think, uh, you know, between the two jurisdictions, we're gonna make a big dent on on what's what's needed in our community. Any other questions?
I don't see any.
So it would be helpful to get budget directions since we are finalizing staff report. That's going to be in next council's meeting. So is council comfortable putting three point five in the twenty twenty three budget?
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom, Jacinda, Darian.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Love it. Uh the next, next up is the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency update.
Great. Well, good evening. Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Jeff Johnston. I am the executive director of the Olympic Region Cleaner Agency. So it's really nice to be here with you this evening. Uh I'm gonna tell you a little bit about a rule efforts that we're doing. I did submit some slides. Does be brought up. Actually, I think I think it's the acrobat. And so so it's it's. There we go. Yeah. So this one, it's that that one. There we go. There we go. No, um it's actually it was there. It was off on the on the right hands. Yeah.
She needs a cake.
I'll have the mouse. I'll take the mouse. Okay, so again, just here this evening to tell you a little bit about uh some work we're doing at Orca to update our rules. Uh specifically related to recreational fires. So in our rec- in our rules, they're called recreational fires, but you can think of them as campfires. Essentially, it's the same thing. And so just very quickly, gonna take you through the background. Why does Orca have this regulation uh in place? Um what's the current air quality situation? Why are we interested in making this rule change and and a little bit about the timeline for making that change? Um just wanted to thank Chief Brooks for being here with me this evening. Uh we've been working closely with the fire fire officials on this because it it impacts them. Um and I'm also here with Ann Nelson, uh Orca's Communications Manager. So I'll also note that uh we've put together a couple page focus sheet that I think was perhaps distributed in your packet ahead of time. If not, we've got copies of that. But a lot of what I'm going to be talking about is um is covered on the two page focus sheet.
In here really quickly, we're just having a small technical issues on.
It's it's PDF. It's right there. Great. Thank you. All right, so first. Perhaps if I just do an arrow. Okay, I think we got this now. All right, so first a little background. Um during the late nineteen eighties, uh urban Thurston County exceeded federal air quality standards for particulate matter. Um particulate matter has a lot of different sources in the atmosphere. Uh cars, trucks, industrial sources, but most importantly for Thurston County, outdoor, indoor and outdoor burning. Um and indoor burning, home heating was the primary cause of the particulate matter. Uh air pollution in Thurston County. So the episodes where we had the highest level of pollution corresponded to cold weather, stagnant air conditions. A lot of people using their wood stoves, their fireplaces, smoke comes out of the chimneys and just kind of sits low to the ground without the wood to distribute. Without the wind to distribute it. So Orca, over the past three decades, Orca worked closely with Department of Ecology, with the EPA. Um to bring the area back into meeting air quality standards. And the area has actually met air quality standards for for more than twenty five years. So some of the actions that Orca and the other these other agencies took were to institute winter time burn bans. Probably, although it's been a while, it's been a few years since we've needed to call them. But stage one, stage two burn bans where we ask people or direct people not to use their wood stoves, especially if they have another source of heat. That's one of the uh one of the methods that we use. Um also, we banned or actually the legislature banned the burning of yard debris within urban growth areas. Um other effort included changing out uh in all of Thurston County more than six hundred old certified wood stoves. Replacing those with new wood stoves or encouraging people to transition to uh electric heat pumps or 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 gas furnaces. Um we still have those programs in place. In fact, in the past year, almost forty Lacey residents have taken advantage of those programs to to uh exchange old wood stoves. Um and then we've also done a lot of outreach, just educating people on how to burn cleanly using dry wood. You know, reduce the amount of smoke that's coming out your chimney. So all of these efforts have paid off, as is shown in this next plot. Uh what this shows is the concentration of particulate matter. So if I can see, use my mouse here. So in the, on the vertical axis, you have particulate matter concentration. And then here on the horizontal axis, you've got dates. So again, it runs from January of nineteen ninety six through January of this year. And so each of these vertical lines is essentially January. And what you can see here is that over time, the concentrations decrease. Now, again, there's a lot of noise, but what what I want to point out is that. With the exception of some wildfire episodes, which have been coming more and more frequent in the past four to five years. The peaks are always right around January, um when again we have these these uh stagnant conditions. Caused by wood stove and so that the particulate pollution caused by wood stoves. Let me say that this uh this monitor is the Lacey Monitoring Site, which is at the. Which is at the Mountain View Elementary School on College. So this is very local information. So, yeah, so again, without these summertime wildfire impacts, you can see that. And we're no longer, we no longer have these high winter wood stove peaks, but it's been, but the the the. Average concentrations have been decreasing significantly. And as I said, we are now uh well within EPA standards for particulate matter pollution.
Jeff, that yellow bar there is not outside of EPA standards.
No, so what.
Higher than average.
Yeah, so what these colors are, these correspond with with an EPA system called AQI or the Air Quality Index. So green, green is good, yellow is moderate. And then then you start getting up into other categories, unhealthy for sensitive groups and unhealthy and other categories. All right, so told you a little bit about um why we had this in place um and uh. What the current air quality conditions are now are now. So want to tell you now a little bit about, well, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this now? Well, essentially, our goal is to reduce confusion. The change will essentially simplify Orca's messaging, allow us to focus on education and outreach. So for folks, if you want to have a campfire, fire pit in your backyard, here's how to do it safely, here's how to do it cleanly. It's worth noting that Lacey, Olympia and Tumwater are the only cities in Western Washington that have this ban on campfires. So also removing this ban would would uh make these cities uh the same as all of. As the other cities and urban growth areas within Orca's six county jurisdiction. So, you know, it would just simplify messaging. Important to point out that this, uh well, throughout, as as long as we've had this regulation. Our enforcement has been strictly complaint driven and that's not going to change. We still, we're not doing anything with our nuisance smoke regulations, so you're still not allowed to smoke out your neighbors if you have. Uh and again, we'll be focusing on education outreach, talking about how to burn, how to use your your fire pits cleanly. But again, you will not be able, you'll you'll still be in violation of Orca regulations if you're causing smoke nuisance issues. Um it's also worth pointing out that this rule change does not impact any other restrictions. Um such as uh any building codes related to setbacks, any restrictions that that homeowners associations have. Um or any other enforcement of burn bans. Again, during the summertime, uh there is a um an outdoor burning, burn ban that runs from. Uh from July fifteenth through September thirtieth that impacts um uh residential burning. Again, that's not allowed inside inside the city limits. But or but if there are other burn bans in place, fire safety burn bans, this does not impact those. Um and again, when I get done with my remarks here, um Chief Brooks can uh at his, answer any questions or provide his perspective on it. So um let's see. All right, so that's why we're doing this in terms of timeline for the rule change. Orca's been talking with our board about this since earlier this year. Um at the, uh and I've been, we've also been reaching out, talking to Lacey, Tumwater, Olympia Fire Departments. Thurston County, um have also been discussing it with city managers. And uh the at the November board meeting, the Orca Board directed us to move forward with this rule change. So in the coming days, well, actually, it's up on our website now, uh we're pushing this out to local media. Um but there'll be an official notice in the Olympian, I believe, tomorrow, opening up the public comment period. Then at the January. Orca Board Meeting on January eleventh, we'll have a formal public hearing for this. We'll look at it, we'll again pay attention to any feedback we get, any comments. Uh we'll make a recommendation to the board and likely adopt this uh either at one of our, uh either the January board meeting or perhaps February. And then the rule change will become effective thirty days after we submit the final paperwork to the code advisor. So that's, I believe, what I had.
The big question is, is do we have any LMCs related to recreation fire fires and this is anybody?
We don't. The coast thing would come to be a nuisance, but pretty rough.
So we don't have to change anything on our end?
No.
Would you mind just for the bit, sure, but I'm not certain they're clear on, can you help with Orca's definition of recreational parks? What is allowed under the principle?
Sure, yes. Um that's, it's.
It's three feet diameter, two feet tall is the maximum size of a recreational fire under RCT.
So if it's bigger than that, it's not going to be a recreational.
And that's burning only clean dry firewood or charcoal.
We're not talking about garbage fire.
That will all, that is, that will remain illegal. Yes, that against Orca regulations, yes.
Chief, just curious from the fire perspective, um I know I've had some conversations with some of your commissioners, some of the commissioners. Who had some concerns with some of this. I just kind of want to get the fire side thought on this.
I appreciate that. Well, I'll start by saying that I want to offer our appreciation for how engaging Orca has been ever since Dr. Johnson took the helm there. They've been very intentional in their outreach, letting us know what was driving some of these discussions from their board. And so we feel, and I believe I speak for Olympian Tom Water Departments as well, that they feel engaged in the process. Candidly, we've been honest with Orca, our biggest concern would be the messaging that goes out, so that there's not confusion about what is and is not permissible. If I think anytime you hear something is now allowed that wasn't previously, it's easy to miss the fine print. That's why I wanted staff to kind of articulate that it is still a fairly narrow definition of what is is allowable or permissible. Candidly, historically, we've not seen abuse of these types of fires. The things we do see are usually rubbish fires or the actual things that are, I think, defined in statute or by Orca as the residential burning. So things like yard waste and the like that would still be allowed in the unincorporated areas, uh but would not be permissible uh within the city limits. From our perspective, I think it does remove a layer of confusion or complexity. You're obviously very familiar, us being a fire district serving both incorporated, unincorporated areas. Uh it can be very confusing that I see my neighbor doing this across the street, literally why I might not able. And I think perhaps it could even, I don't want to assign that it could, that it already is, but it could perhaps be a barrier to future annexations. A concern about I'm giving up a right that I currently have, that I would no longer have being within the city limits. Uh so for example, I can think of your larger developments that sit, you know, the urban growth areas that sit within the center of the current city limits. That could be a unique challenge that this would remove that barrier. So while there is concerns about if it's, uh the messaging is not clear and understood, uh the penalty could swing in an unhealthy direction. I don't think we have concerns that if these rules are followed, that it will create an increased risk um to the community. And when you have large retailers like your Home Depot and Lowe's that are selling these products inside the city limits already, that just adds to the confusion. So I think that would, uh this would help to alleviate a lot of that.
What about um setbacks and anything else? Is there a recommendation from the fire department that we should enforce setbacks from structures or so on?
And I know I would hate to speak out of turn, I don't know if you're welcome, people, I know we talked with uh Terry McDaniel was at one of the meetings regarding this. And it sounds like what you already have in the building and fire codes would actually address that. While there's not a separate school, I think LMC would uh address this, there would be provisions within the adopted fire building codes. That would define those things, it would still be enforceable for.
And I know there's been some questions about um. Some people that are homeless community having smart recreational fires. And that not being allowed within the urban growth area was was one thing. But then you also have to allow for, you see this. Being, you know, an an issue uh or having more recreational fires along those terms?
Um perhaps, and I think that's honestly, we won't know until we see, I think the other part, and I don't want to get ahead of the kind of a separate project that we're also working or talking with Orca about. Our other initiatives, candidly, what we've seen in the encampments and the homelessness issues is it has been fires that would would not be. In compliance here, uh so you'd have things propane fueled fires have been our biggest issue. And I guess our hope would be that if they had something that was more manageable and small, that was encouraged or sanctioned in some way. We could then give them better information about why not to do the more risky behaviors like propane fed or other open flame. Yeah, particularly in dwellings.
It was the communication around working with some of the homeless camps that actually led to us questioning this, the the rule. And thinking about that we could have clearer communication around it if we get rid of the ban on recreational fires on campfires. So we don't have to think about this notion of survival fires and people being upset because they see in in camps people burning. But they can't burn in their own backyard.
Got it.
I think she brought up a good point and glad we have Mr. Communication here, too. It seems like we're going to need to work together on messaging that each of the jurisdictions in Orca. Puts out together. Well, have you got some basic message messaging structure?
What's allowed, what's not allowed?
We have stuff in place, uh and we will be developing more targeted messaging. I don't see us doing a a big push saying now you can burn. It's more along the lines of, these are the updated rules. If you are going to burn, make sure you're using clean dry firewood and you're, you know, you're using in a a. Fire pit that's approved by the fire departments or the international fire codes. And whatever the messaging we get from the the fire folks and from the city folks will incorporate that all. So, yeah, we we look forward to doing good cooperative outreach with all three cities and the the fire departments of each.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks for the.
Again, thanks for your time.
So our next agenda item, I'll turn it over to Troy. It's a reserved destination discussion.
Being being counsel, it's probably worth noting your finance directors reached the age that's no longer expected to provide technical support.
Shannon, forget if you started here.
Seems really recent, but it still hurts my feelings a little bit. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We would like to get final direction on the council's committed reserves. We do this as part of our year end process. Kind of selfishly from the accounting standpoint, we need to have this action taken by the end of the year so we can properly put together the city's finance financial statements. Although more importantly, this is really the council's opportunity to make sure that our reserves match your priorities and initiatives. So within the accounting guidelines, there's five different categories in which we designate reserves. We'll focus tonight's conversation on committed and assigned reserves. Committed reserves are the constraints put on reserves that is decided by the highest level of decision making of the city, which is the city council. Assigned reserves, historically, the council has delegated that authority to the city manager and finance director, and we would suggest you can continue to do that. That allows a lot of flexibility in terms of mid-year adjustments to those reserves, so we can watch and see the intent of the council throughout the year, and that allows us to make those changes to also communicate the council's initiatives and priorities. What I'd like to do is start off with really answering a question that came from the finance committee, and I think specifically the mayor, and talking about the total cash balances for the city. The city has twenty nine different funds. Think about those as like mini budgets, little mini operations within the city. It's obviously a complicated operation. So I'm going to try to break that down into more categories, so it's a little more manageable and explaining some of the different nuances within our reserves. So here on the left, we have the twenty nine funds listed, and I'm sorry, we have so many they don't fit on the screen at once. But in total, we have, by the way, year end, two thousand twenty one, so there's no consideration for any cash that's been received or spent in two thousand twenty two. In terms of the the categories themselves, I have in green highlighted here the general fund. Of course, that is the fund that provides the services assistance most identify with, like police and parks and transportation. We have the utility funds in blue coming in at about eighty eight million. These are enterprise funds, and these are funds that are operated like a business. So the revenues collected within these funds are for a very specific purpose. We can't use them elsewhere. So, for example, water rates must pay for services related to water. At the bottom here, while there we have the the equipment rental fund and the information management services fund. Those are also enterprise funds, but they're internal service funds, and it's really the same rules. We collect service fees from our city departments for that very purpose. We have special revenue funds here in red. These are funds that have some sort of legal restriction on, or they're a special revenue. Think about fuel tax as an example. Fuel tax must be used for transportation purposes. So we have a number of different special revenue funds. And then we have capital funds in this kind of peach orange color. These are really kind of extensions of the general fund. We move general fund taxes and revenues into these funds for specific capital projects that we have within the budget. And then finally, we have the debt service funds here in a kind of this brighter blue. Those are specifically for collecting revenues in which to repay outstanding debt. So when you think about the six broad categories of our twenty nine funds, the utility funds, special revenue funds, the debt service and internal service funds, that's about seventy percent of our fund balance. They're specifically for certain purposes. So that's really to say we can't do anything we want with those funds. But the general fund, on the other hand, is the most flexible type of funds, and that's, you know, primarily what we discuss in terms of designated reserves for our funds, but.
So the general fund plus the capital projects funds.
Right. I highlighted here in this column here with the asterisks, really just to kind of highlight and to provide for future conversation here in just a few minutes. We do want to talk about the funding at the police station tonight. Also would like the opportunity to talk about the three point five million dollars for the permanent regional housing as well. But these are primarily the funds that we would identify in terms of those two projects. You know, obviously, looking at arterial street fund, you would think that'd be transportation, and it is and it has been historically, but the majority of this thirty eight million dollars is real estate excise tax. So it's a tax on the transaction of real estate sales. There's a broader eligible use for those funds. Historically, in the city, we've used those for transportation only, but, you know, with the council party, with this police station, we'd like, you know, certainly the council to consider shifting the use, the historic use of those funds for that purpose.
Any questions about, so are there, are there, I think it's only the arterial street funds I can see that you can actually move funds from arterial street funds into more of a general fund purpose. You can't with transportation improvements, lodging tax, CDVG, or Hixlake Management. So that's the only one where you can actually move some of those funds into general fund purpose.
That's correct, and specifically it's limited to the real estate excise.
But you can with a rack capital as well.
Well, rack capital is funded from the public facility system.
So it falls in that category.
So within arterial streets, we'll preserve any traffic mitigation that we collect on development projects, any fuel tax will remain in that fund. So again, it's specifically real estate excise tax where.
Useful visual. Does the color of money matter in how we are able to bend it?
I've never, I've never seen this before, so I appreciate you.
Yeah, I will certainly keep this updated and bring this forward as we have this discussion. I think it really kind of sets the conversation up.
My my one question off the bat, Troy, is if we were to use some of that money from the arterial street fund money, how will it have any negative impact on our ability to maintain our streets and all that, that that money has been used for a short?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So I'll probably kind of waffle on my answer.
So the that balance right there is an accumulation of funds that we've received over how many years? I mean, that's been
It's over the life of the fund, and we actually went back to nineteen ninety three specifically.
So we we use maybe a fraction of that money on a
It really depends, and that's where the waffling comes in. So, you know, the council considers every year a transportation improvement plan. I don't remember what the dollar amount was this year, but it's often near a hundred million dollars. So that's one perspective in terms of, you know, what our city will look forward to in the future. I'll also say that our staff, I think, is probably one of the best around in obtaining grant grant awards. And we typically don't build a a large project without a considerable amount of of grand dollars involved in there. So that, you know, hope gives the council some confidence. We have been collecting real estate excise tax much higher than we have historically. I, we've been, we've already collected four million dollars this year. We budgeted for two. We've averaged about four million over the last four to five years. So, I mean, I think we all know what's been happening in the real estate market. But we also know there's probably, well, I've heard the term housing recession from the Congress, you know, quite a bit here.
Count on higher than expected revenue forever.
So the, you know, the long term kind of perspective of that is, you know, we've been kind of looking at that two to two point five million is probably maybe as a reset and real estate excise tax. There's always going to be real estate transactions that occur.
Well, one of the reasons why we've been so successful keeping that dollar amount up there is because we've had the funds that we can meet the local match. So when we go to build a street, right, you're you apply for a bunch of grants, and all those grants take a match, and we've obviously had the match to be successful to go out and get the fund. So it is a double edged sword, but we've been very, very successful. I think the key is is to leave enough in the in arterial street funds where you can still go after the major matches. And and so we don't want to complete it down to nothing. But we've also been very lucky to have some amazing grant writers and 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 the way we've built out, I've done our projects is, you know, we've done a lot with grant funding.
No doubt, but we also have to be cognizant of that's not always, doesn't always work out, right? We just saw a presentation today on Grand Cuyo Park where a lot of the grant money we were hoping for doesn't look likely. So you can't always count on all the grant money to happen either.
So we have historically funded our big transportation projects with and that's true. And we've been successful because we can, our trail street fund, they can provide the management funds for that. However, it's important to keep in mind that we have several larger projects that we have transportation projects that have moved around by college and seven roundabout, and those in terms of transportation, safety, pedestrian mobility, all those things, it doesn't qualify. It's so there's that, a written part, that's north of five million dollar project. Carpenter Road, Ritten Parkway Roundabout, which is currently under design, two point six million dollars. That's a hundred percent city funded. Or when the municipal code was updated for master planning district now midtown. Now, there's numerous streets that the city is responsible for paying a hundred percent of construction costs. So Fourth Avenue from College to Golf Club is one of them. There's Ten Avenue from Golf Club to Outhead. There's roads like that. Those are, you know, we will never qualify for transportation projects. We've identified forty four million dollars worth of potential expense in the arterial street fund, city responsibility over the next ten years. So, obviously, we need to get together and decide. You know, I mean, the other element, it's important to understand read, the the three main revenue sources for the arterial street fund are REED, which there's been so many sales that over eleven million dollars spent added to this fund in the last three years only. The other main resource which is about three hundred thousand a year. So, you know, ten years of that, you're only getting another three million dollars. And then the others, transportation mitigation fees, which are specific to the projects and most of the projects. So I, I mean, yes, the police department is, you know, my priority and, you know, you know, it's all hands on the grill and getting the funding to make that happen. But I, to be fully informed, yeah, we we do have a full plate of expenses here. So and and to take a large amount out of this fund and then take a hundred percent of the REED funds, the funding is it's not going to build itself back up very quickly. So some of these projects, obviously, everything that we have grants for, we currently have grants for in our show on the city, over eleven million dollars worth of city commitment in the next ten years. And then there's the projects like College and Seven.
So can we get back to how much were you planning on taking out our tail street fund?
Uh, yeah, let me go to my technical support and switch.
So why would you, I just want to add the fact that using REED is a policy decision. So, yes, historically, we put it into our total street fund, but that's not necessarily the first use. I mean, you have the option of doing recreational facilities, admin facilities, law enforcement facilities. There's a number of uses that REED allows under state law. So again, historically, we've used that. I agree, we need to make sure we don't drop the arterial street fund to a level where we can't accomplish some of our transportation priorities. But there's nothing to say that you can't take some of those funds and avoid increasing property taxes to achieve the goal of building a police station.
So this is the arterial street fund. Again, you can see the same dollar amount from the previous spreadsheet. So maybe I'll paint a bigger picture in terms of the police station. So you recently saw the thirty percent doc design estimate between forty nine and fifty two million, I believe. The 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 initial proposal from staff is to use roughly half of the real estate excise tax that's available in the arterial street fund, which leaves eighteen million dollars. Let me jump around here just a little bit. We, of course, have the Harper dollars. This is only last year's first tranche. We'd have received the second tranche. It's just not reflecting these numbers because these are year end, again, year end, two thousand twenty one numbers. So there is six point eight million dollars there. We talked about at the budget workshop using or repurposing or re-designating the Gateway Development Investment Dollars of eight million. We still have seven million dollars from a previous committed reserve from the council, so there's another seven hundred thousand there. So when you add those dollars up, we get most of the way to the, get about thirty million in terms of the fifty two million, that leaves, you know, debt of about it's actually about eighteen million, if I remember right. In terms of kind of the planning part, that I've used twenty for the debt. So if if the twenty year debt is five percent over twenty years, that's about one point six million dollars in annual debt service payments. Like I said, we hope that the new normal in terms of real estate excise tax collections is somewhere in the two to two point five million range. So hopefully, it's close to that two point five, and we end up having a million dollars per year, at least in real estate excise tax, plus the eighteen million that we have remaining in the in the fund. So that's kind of the kind of the rough idea in terms of where we go with the police station. Obviously, there's a whole nother phase in terms of design. We're going to have much finer details in terms of the cost of the police station. I, you know, I think we'll obviously be adjusting throughout two thousand twenty three as more information and more progress.
Have these numbers dramatically changed since the present, since this was first? Because I I thought, somehow I remember the number here, that not being eighteen million, but being like seven billion when you first brought this idea up of using some of our reserve.
So the original numbers that we talked about during the budget process was eight from the gateway project, seven million from March, there's fifteen, and we talked about using ten million from
Now we're at eight, now we're looking
Now we're talking about eight additional more dollars.
The cost increased, and we are only using a portion of the arbito.
Right. This is when we were still, well, estimating a forty million dollar project, and then the latest one came in at fifty to, well, forty nine to fifty two.
And and this is this staff's recommendation.
Correct.
So you're 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 doing all this without touching any of the fifty two million dollars we have in reserves?
Well, and that's a good point, Mr. Mayor.
You think that's going to slip past me?
All these other reserves are, yeah, I mean, all these other reserves are at the council discretion. So any one of these priorities you could change with a simple adoption of a, one ordinance. So you know, we do have a lot of flexibility that
So if you if you add up all the other committed reserves, was that, was that break that fifty two million down down to, you know?
Well, I've, we've accounted for just about everything.
Oh, I see that.
So I'll point out, though, eight million is part of the fifty one. That's the gateway project. That is part of the original fifty one.
I'm just wondering if there's anyplace else other than, I mean, it just feels like take eighteen from the arterial street middle reserve seems like we're hitting it really hard, and that concerns me for that ability to make sure we have the matching funds to be able to get future grants. And of course, you know, Scott just gave us a list of projects that are not going to qualify for grants. We have to be able to pay for those, though. So I'm just wondering if there's, I mean, the police station is obviously, you know, priority. But is there anyplace else to take some of that money from instead of eighteen million coming from that one source?
I could run through all the funds, which is what I planned first before we got to the police station discussion. I understand we want to, you know, tackle the tackle the big one, but that might be helpful for you to kind of decide and look at priorities and
Can we go through a couple of the committed? Can I ask Lenny a question? What was the number you'd feel more comfortable, like fifteen million?
I don't know. I mean, the number that we were talking about originally was ten, right? So it's it's that's a huge difference, coming into eighteen. I'm not saying I wouldn't support it, obviously. That's a huge difference coming into eighteen. I'm not saying I wouldn't support it. Obviously, the police station is has been my, one of my number one priorities for sure. But I'm just wondering if there's other places to take it from, that's all. I'm not saying there's no specific number. I'm just wondering where where else we might be able to take it from that may hurt less.
What's more important is. Hearing from Troy and Scott Edgar about what their comfort level is with the arterial street fund. Because, you know, we where roughly would be the dead zone. And here, when we need to sustain what we're doing now.
Your your thirty second elevator speech in comfort.
Well. We have a sheet to summarize. Grant funded projects. Nine recent projects that shows twelve to twenty three million. Uh and then there are annual programs by. Five hundred thousand years. Projects, you know. Five million over the ten years, uh you know, by pet clients, five hundred thousand year. It's all those kind of things. So um. Yeah, we haven't had the time to sit down and look at the the longer term cash flow project. And then as well as what's left to contribute back to the fund. But you know, like I said, this adds up to forty four million over ten years. So. You know, taking the fund down to eighteen million. Adding back three hundred thousand year from gas tax, which gas tax you must define. Uh isn't going to give back to port four. So there have should be some conversations about what. You know, what we want to cut out of this plan.
Or what other source of revenue to rebuild it? So I mean, the the idea would be there's still going to be some read money that we can put back in there. It would be the hope, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to propose. I mean, we were hoping if we do a councilmatic process, it's like a one point five, one point six. So if we're gonna average a two to two point six, you're potentially bringing another half to a million dollars in that thing.
Then we go back and that would go back to.
Yeah, that's what we decided to do. Let me just throw this out. I mean, I would feel comfortable with eighteen to twenty million in Arturo Street Fund. Um you still gotta understand too, we have two more years before this project gets completed. So you have two more years of read going into that fund. We're just looking at a snapshot for, you know, twenty twenty one. Um we still don't know what the final cost is gonna be. They can go either way, but um. That should give you some comfort that we should have enough. Plus, the things that we're talking about are over a ten year period. Um I understand the EV thing, but that there's some number of things that is that gonna happen every year? We put a half million dollars for EV chargers? Or maybe some other dynamic that pays for that? There's some unknowns in that, is my point.
And the the other thing is is every year during our normal budgeting process, we're. Several million dollars seems like goes over to at least goes into our um reserves as well. I mean, closed out in the last year and how much was?
Somewhere around four.
Sorry, sorry, four million. I imagine it's gonna be around that again this year. So that's that's eight million right right there over a two year period. So I'm I'm I guess I'm I'm pretty comfortable.
That's not our turtle street fund money.
No, that's just overall.
And that was my whole point of is there a better place to take some of it from? To help keep that.
I think I think what we I think what we do is on a year by year basis, we take a look at all of our, just like we're doing now. Let's look, we'd look at reserves. Let's see the projects that we have and let's move around money to get the projects done and.
The next two years, we're anticipating another two point or two million approximately each year to. Yeah, I mean, I know it's a guess.
It really depends. I mean, this year, you know, we um had a strong first half of the year. Um you know, we're seeing some slowing out there. Inflation is still high. I mean, but. You know, the like I've I've said many times, the Federal Reserve is purposely trying to slow down the economy and they're going to keep going until they're successful. So we do know a slowdown is coming. So um but we have always taken a very conservative approach when it comes to budgeting. Um we, you know, as an example, we fully fund every single position authorized in the budget. We always have vacancies. It's just.
Lack salary dollars every year.
You have four hundred employees, somebody is going to retire or find other work. Um so, yeah, I think we're, you know, just our approach in budgeting sets us up well for these. Uses of one time monies.
To me, it's like, I think we've been pretty responsible as a municipality when it comes to, you know, one time expenditures like police stations and and such. And I think that goes a long way. So if you're gonna stretch it, you know, as compared to reducing it to fifteen million, you could probably stretch it to twenty and be. You know. Good because of the historic, you know, pattern of us being responsible.
I, you know, if if the the fear is about our tail street funds, we can commit some of these additional. Reserves over the next two years back to the Arturo Street Fund and probably guess back down to that ten million, right?
Are there other places we can take the money from instead of doing it there? Or is there a way to replenish that money faster?
Yeah.
Because three hundred thousand a year or even a half million a year isn't gonna replenish that money over the ten year period to be able to do the projects that need to be done. That's my whole point is where else is there in the budget? Where else in these reserves can we take money from? What else makes sense instead of all of it coming?
Can we commit fifteen million and still make it work knowing that we're gonna get more money in the next couple of years before the project breaks ground? You know, and play it safe that way.
Well, think of think about this as a snapshot in time.
Yeah.
That whatever, you know, the council gives direction for tonight, that snapshot is going to be. One minute before midnight, December thirty first, two thousand twenty two. Then a lot of things are gonna change, right? Uh we're gonna spend money here. We're gonna bring in tax revenues and other fees and services. You know, you have the opportunity to change your mind at any time. You just direct staff and we will recommit. This isn't. An obligation to spend. That's the budget that does that. These are all monies that are off the budget. Um we cannot spend any of these funds. We won't move forward at the police station until you authorize it within the budget. So there's plenty of opportunity to have that discussion and things will obviously change.
I think that part's pretty straightforward. I mean, I think everyone's committed to the police station. So we know we're we know we're funding it. We're gonna do this. It's just a matter of. Over time, where the money actually comes from. I I don't think there's anyone at the table that isn't fully supportive of moving forward with funding the police station. That's that's a must.
I I think that it needs to be recognized too, that it's not just a police station, but what the police station provides. And there's so much community outreach and and involvement with the police department themselves and their and their personnel. It's not just, you know, public safety. It's, I mean, you're you're making your quality of life.
Here here's the thing is, I trust you, Troy, to be making these good recommendations to this council. You're the you're the finance director. You're the expert here. Um you've have a track record of making good decisions when it comes to our C Y C finances and I expect that to go forward. So I have a lot of faith in 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 your recommendation. If this is your recommendation, then you have my support.
It sounds as though. We will have accumulation over time of reserves in the future. So committing eighteen million now. And then having a conversation every year to shift additional reserves back into.
The fund as projects come up.
Right. We can we can do that. We can plan as a council to just have a practice of doing that to make sure that we can cover the police station. And the future transportation projects that don't have grant support.
If we do this every year, we'll have a better idea of where we're at. So.
I'm good with the eighteen million. I think. City and the and the departments, you know.
Do you need a motion from us? Or do you just say sort of a heads up that, yeah, this you're on the right? Because this doesn't have to come before the council. Yeah, it'll come before the council next Thursday in form of ordinance. Um so, I mean, I could. I do have one other thing I'd like your direction on before we go forward, but. Council member Cox, you had your hand up every once in a while. Did we cover your answer or questions or?
Pretty much. I I was just going to ask where you're recommending we told the three point five billion for.
That's that's my last question for you. It is. Arturo Street.
Of course.
No, we're still gonna have the square footage from the old. The the current station too, you know, when this is all said and done. So you know, that's a win too.
It might need some more.
Yeah.
More work when the new station's gonna.
So the regional permanent housing project that we just discussed a little bit earlier this evening. Um what I would suggest is we uh make this a priority for those excess funds that may come in in two thousand twenty two. Um I don't want to count any cash or commit any cash before we actually have it in hand and that is the midnight. You know, New Year's Eve uh number that we'll look at. Um. To give council some confidence that we will have that three point five million, we, you know, clearly have uh you know, a a. A large pool to to look at. I mean, we if we don't receive excess funds at the end of the year of at least three point five million. There is ARPA dollars that this will qualify for. And we do have other facility reserves within this list that can make up that difference as well. Uh but again, I wouldn't want the council to commit funds that we don't actually have in hand. So. As I said, we could use the assigned reserve um approach with that in terms of looking at that priority at the.
I have to laugh a little, Troy. I've been on the council now. This is my eleventh budget. We've never not had extra money on December thirty.
Is it gonna be three point five? Is it gonna be three million?
Right. We don't know the number, but there's just gonna be a a big piece of that three point five.
I'm confident there's going to be additional reserves just from what we've seen in the first ten months of the year. So, yeah, but I, you know, I certainly don't want to make promises.
Stick to your bro.
Are you just recommending that we assign the?
Well, I'm recommending that council actually don't take any action for the permanent supportive housing. Let staff, let city manager and finance director assign those on the financial statements. And therefore, they will be there for your your budget. So we could we could change our budget to add the three point five million dollars. And we will do that and we'll just use a generic beginning cash as the revenue offset for that three point five million dollars. And then we'll identify exactly where it's gonna where those funds are gonna come from and hopefully it comes in a form of excess.
I don't I don't remember off the top of my head how much our general fund is making an interest off of our. Every year.
That's a moving target. I just looked at that today. I wish. I think uh through. November, the general fund itself, well, just the current expense fund, that's when I specified that. It was almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Um which is it's that's somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven times more than we did last year. And that's because last year rates were basically zero.
And and that number is gonna go significantly up, especially with we're as we're in retargets the fifty.
Exactly.
Fifty million that's gonna come up this next year and try to retarget some of that money.
Right. And we've already taken liquid funds and moved them into that longer term as you reported out in the finance committee. Uh minutes at the last council meeting. So we're we're moving into that that five percent range in terms of our yield versus. Zero last year.
Yeah, that's that's gonna continue for a little while.
Yeah.
You know, Twin Story announced yesterday a seven month CD paying for.
Wow.
On a seven seven month CD.
Holy smokes. That's pretty good.
Pretty good on a seven month.
You mentioned earlier that this budget only shows the first tranche for ARPA fund. So. Isn't the other? Three million or so not shown?
That's that's correct. It will be it will be there. Again, this is. The ending cash from last year. So we have all of two thousand twenty two that's not accounted for in any of these balances. So.
We know that that's already coming in.
Yeah, I well, to the council agreement, I guarantee you there'll be at least three point five million.
You don't get a trigger guarantee very often. So is there any recommendations from this that? What's the big changes?
So the big changes ag- again are related to the 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 police station reserves. Um again, we won't account for the permanent supportive housing. We will handle that at year end. Uh so any staff action. Um we have great Kyo Park. Phase one A. Um we had assigned that last year, so that happened at the end of the year with the cash we received last year. Uh we'd like council to commit that. So it's a little firmer commitment for that, obviously, from your presentation earlier today as well.
The succession planning for places one point six million?
Uh no, it's gonna be two million.
Three two million.
Um we're using about seven hundred fifty thousand a year now.
Is it? Four positions?
Five positions. It's two officers, a sergeant and in your proposed two thousand twenty three budget, two lieutenants.
So what do you need the two mil, the full two mil?
That's a multi-year um reserve. We've been actually using it.
Funds positions.
You can see the up and downs. Um we.
Like double fill.
Yeah, we were we were funding three positions, which was somewhere in the four hundred thousand per year. So we have been spending it, but we've also been replenishing this too.
How you been replenishing it mostly just? In a year stuff?
Right, in a year stuff. Yeah, I mean, you know, in reality, those positions, I think, are going to have to stay in the budget just, you know. From what we're seeing from a law enforcement perspective. So, you know, if we, which is why it's been a priority to re to replenish that reserve.
So we are. In general, you know, the law enforcement is having a harder time attracting candidates. And so I think it's all the more important that we invest in now. Plus, we have an aging force as well. Make a good sense.
Just because you get candidates doesn't mean they survive to the end of the hiring process either.
Going to ask the council to again move from an assigned reserve to commit a reserve two hundred fifty thousand for clean energy initiatives.
A half million's just for unassigned budget.
It is. That gives us flexibility. There's never been a year in my twenty seven years of budgeting if you haven't had an amendment.
Yep.
So. That gives us that assurance.
It'd be pretty amazing if you actually made it through a year without having to have any amendments.
Well, I was just teasing Shannon here today. She already has an amendment for the two thousand twenty three. She wasn't the first. She wasn't the first.
Well, you said the budget's only good for it.
Yeah, in this case, it's not even gonna be good when you. That's normal. No changes in community buildings, but you know, we do have reserves for, you know, kind of unexpected building repairs. Uh the rack, we have a half million dollars for field synthetic field replacement. We have actually reserves throughout the different funds. Um I think there's somewhere around two point four million dollars for uh synthetic filler replacement, which should cover the next. Complete, you know, overhaul of the spiels. Uh street fund, there's a, you know, a number of, this is from the operational side, not the capital side. Um but we do have um. Reserves for um equipment replacement. Um you know, you've um heard some initial discussions about. Facilities throughout the city that need replacing. So there's unfortunately about a million dollars in the street fund for that, but it's it's something for sure. Uh capital equipment, not a lot of change from what we've seen in past uh ordinances. But again, you see the synthetic field, six ninety five, just kind of a miscellaneous capital replacement in case unexpected.
Something's gonna break.
Always does. Um we have uh we're going to ask the uh council to commit fifty thousand dollars for translation. Uh technologies, uh two hundred fifty thousand dollars just as a kind of a a fund as as we. Enter into the new norm, whatever that is in terms of teleworking and workforce and how we deliver services.
So what what do you think with now that like laptop, I mean?
Laptops, we may have some reconfigurations here in City Hall. I mean, think about shared workspaces. If we have people only working. You know, fifty percent of the time in City Hall, does it make sense to have a hundred percent dedicated? Um place in City Hall for that. So I mean, really, we need to kind of reimagine what that may look like. And I don't know specifically, but yeah, certainly laptop technology is going to be a part of that.
Who is moving those from assigned to committed is all we're looking at there?
Right, right. Um we have a a little bit here, um eighteen thousand dollars. It's actually in the proposed budget for two thousand twenty three. Um that they reported out, you know, our our venture into expanding uh credit cards here in two thousand twenty three. Uh going back to those other funds, we talked about Arturo Streets.
So being cash is going up quite a bit too.
Yes, yeah. Uh transportation improvements, really no action. That is the, you know, two tenths of a percent of sales tax. It's dedicated to your street repair sidewalk repair. you know, two tenths of a percent of sales tax that's dedicated to your street repair sidewalk repair. Lodging tax, um those are restricted funds as well. Um we've kept this in the signed reserve for um again, the rack field replacement. Uh Hicks Lake, that is a management district that we help manage, but that's technically the district's funds. Uh building improvement, this is a capital fund.
How much is in there? How many eleven?
Yep, just over a hundred and eleven. Uh building improvement, this is a a capital fund. I wanna point out that we are again adding the one dollar per capita to the um to that fund. I believe we have fifty thousand dollars for public guard projects for the two thousand twenty-three budget. Uh we have some facility replacement funds, capital facility plan implementation. Uh this is another area we could look at in terms of the police station, another area we could look at in terms of the permanent supportive housing, so I mean, we do have a lot of different flexibility for those two projects. Uh parks and open space fund, uh not a whole lot in that fund. We really just have been carrying over a you know, kind of small reserves. Um at the time, we weren't exactly sure what the fifty-seven hundred Pacific property is going to look like. Uh regional athletic complex, um this is another restricted fund, again funded through public facility district sales tax. Um the big change here is um looking at kind of the long-term uh operational planning for the rack. Uh this is just a facility that runs at a deficit. Um I think the council has acknowledged this as a, you know, a critical community park. So um you know, certainly that ends up being a general fund function, so you know, as we as we look here in the next maybe five years, you know, really try to solidify what we're going to do with the rack. Uh the public facilities district sales tax is going to expire unless we act on that extension in two thousand twenty-seven, so we have about five years here really to take a look at that fund. So that million dollars is really to, you know, help carry us um through that five-year period.
Then extension would only be if we did an additional project sometime, right? We can't we can't extend it without an additional project.
They have to issue debt.
Debt, yeah, but which is associated with projects, so um yeah, certainly there, you know, we'll have to have discussions on the possibility of that, and you know, that's a standalone district that um includes Olympia and the uh the county as well, so and and Tom Water as well, actually, so. Uh general obligation debt, like I said, that's, you know, really where we pared that back. Um and then you have your equipment rental fund and your um information management systems fund, which again are enterprise funds, which wants to restrict for those specific purposes, but I do wanna point out, we have identified uh two point five million dollars for green fleet conversion. We have a mandate in Washington State by two thousand thirty-five to convert our vehicles to uh electric vehicles, so um we're already starting that in two thousand, actually, we started that in two thousand twenty-two, but you know, so we identified two point five nine dollars to help us on that path.
So on each one of these things like for green fleet conversions or any anything that associated with climate change, can you like start making a little asterisk so you can at the end of reserves kind of show what what we have committed for that for each year as a recommendation?
That's a great follow-up that Councilor asked us this question from last week.
Yeah, Mr. Moreno, on his request, because even as we're going through it, like I mentioned earlier, the color of money, our commitments in climate areas are in different buckets of money, coming out of different classes.
So we have a really robust webpage that explains all the issues. We could put some dollar amounts to it, but right, the LED conversion, the green fleet conversion, the E D project, um you know, there's a power green power.
Green power is another one. There's a number of things that we've um added into that would exceed even the number that he had mentioned.
Yeah, again, it goes back to what we've talked about in the past. We've gotta point that stuff down. Sometimes you gotta treat.
And we never do.
Well, Scott and I have discussed this many times. We do we don't do a very good job as a city of pushing out the positives. Negatives are always gonna get out there. You don't have to work hard to get them. But you gotta push the positives or else people just don't know, and then you get people questioning, you know, why, why, why is it that Lacy is not doing anything? Well, we're doing all kinds of things. We just haven't done a good job of telling anyone what we're doing.
Yeah. How about reminding?
Reminding's a good idea. We'll go with reminding.
Once, they just.
Gotta keep telling.
So there's one final, that and this won't be an action item for the council, but I do wanna make the council aware. So we have this L I D fund that's been sitting here for many years. It's got a balance of three point eight million dollars. Um these are basically unencumbered funds.
Really?
We used or am I, I think it was two thousand well, it was the L I D here at College and Martin. There's all the commercial sewer project. We actually funded that through interfund loans to the sewer department from these funds, and so they're coming back. Um we also had, you know, various L I Ds throughout the city history that we've since repaid back. Um the way we establish L I Ds, we establish their interest rate before we go out to market. Uh we have early payoffs within L I Ds. Typically, what happens when a property sells, uh they want clear title, so they require the L I D to be repaid off, so we get early repayments back into this fund. Um interest that isn't paid out, so we've been accumulating funds in this in this uh fund, so you know, it's really just to plant the seed for council that it's there, and you know, we certainly wanna have discussions, maybe even police station. I mean, so my point is it's unen- unencumbered funds that we could certainly have a conversation.
And that's not the fund that we've used to support septic to sewer conversion matching
No, no.
in neighborhoods. That's in a different spot.
No, we look at, you know, those are, those are funded through L I Ds, but those are typically funded through um these debt funds here.
Okay.
Uh stormwater, our water sewer.
There is another unencumbered fund that in there that I did.
Four million bucks.
There is.
So so how those debt funds, other four point one four, three point eight is unencumbered.
And then these funds, we will actually transfer out. The council actually included that in uh the budget amendment. Those did go towards the police station, or will go towards this police station. I think it was right around three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um cuz we did kind of take a look at the first half of two thousand twenty-two as far as what we could transfer out of that for the police station, so this will be much closer to zero by the time we end two thousand twenty-two, but.
How quickly does Fund two oh two, the L I D debt replenish? Like, is that a a regular replenishment? Do we have existing debt out there that's pulling back in or?
The only outstanding debt we're receiving payments for is that L I D right here, College Martin, and I
So that's not a bucket that's gonna fill itself back up?
It's not. It's not going to be very. This is, a lot of this is, I think about the gateway and the the roads. I mean, this is mostly road projects that happen out in in the gateway area, the, you know, the Marvin Road area, so you know, that was a significant L I D, so. Uh that's where the the bulk of that came from.
So you're saying you could take it down to zero, or or do you recommend leaving something in there?
We could take that down to zero. There's no, there's no commitment out of that fund. Um so I mean, that's just another flexible, another we can look at. You know, like I said, that that police station design is, we're going to see a lot of different numbers go up and down and um you know, so I, you know, just really wanted to count to be aware that that's there, and we have a little bit of cushion or flexibility as that council sees fit.
Anything else?
So we'll bring back the ordinance to you next week and we'll consider that an option.
Well, that was good news. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward. Like I said, that that, these are numbers I haven't seen in this format before. We always talk about the the overall number that's out there, but since we don't budget it, we don't see it. So um I appreciate seeing it.
I see.
So next, last up is our television production and programming services.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Hopefully, I don't need a technical assistant for my.
I hope Mac, you are the only one that can do it.
Are you, are you the youngest one in the room?
Not gonna do a survey, but could be the case here. All right, it looks like we did it uh pretty, pretty okay here. Um well, uh good evening, council. I'm here tonight to talk about television production and programming services uh for the city, and I previously came before the council back in September to talk about an R F P uh that Lacey, in addition to Olympia, Tumwater and Thurston County, were going out for for these services. Um and so if you recall from that meeting back in September, when we were talking about the R F P, we discussed how we intentionally designed the R F P to be in an à la carte style, where we were really interested in hearing from potential designated service providers on what they could provide, um with the idea that the jurisdictions would be able to select the services that would best align with their needs moving forward. Uh we also emphasized as part of that process that we were really interested in looking at uh types of services that were innovative and sustainable, um and really wanting to know more information on how that what, how and what that looked like for now, but also into the future. So through the R F P, which was released in mid-September, we had it open till mid-October. Uh we received one submitted, which I will get into more detail here in just a second, but before I get into that detail, I just wanna provide again kind of background in what uh PEG services are and kind of what the history for the city has been um of of the recent past. So just to start us off, um we have a cable franchise agreement in all of the jurisdictions, uh uh Olympia and Thurston County, we have these franchises with Comcast, and they are ten-year, not-exclusive franchise agreements that expire in two thousand thirty-one. Federal law allows uh cable franchising authorities, which the city of Lacey is the cable franchising authority, to establish a requirement for PEG, which is for public education and government uh TV services. And so currently in our franchise agreement, and this is very similar to the franchise agreement that we had previously, there is a thirty cent uh per month per residential subscriber uh fee that gets uh passed on to us from Comcast as for PEG-related services here at the city. So just a little bit more background on PEG, um and this is from the FCC, which is the Federal Communication Commission. Uh the important thing to note is that PEG channels are not mandated by federal law, rather, they are a right that are given to franchising authorities, again, which the city is and which the city can or any other franchising um authority can choose to exercise. So the public uh the P in PEG generally stands for for public access. Um and those are channels that are used by the general public, and they are usually administered either by the cable operator or by a third party designated by the franchising authority. Education, the E, are access channels that are used by educational institutions for educational programming. Um and these are typically programming done by local schools, colleges, universities, either by the franchising authority or the cable operator. And then G, which is government access, the G in PEG, and that is used by local governments. Um and most, in most cases, the jurisdictions directly control and oversee these channels. So um back in uh September, when we presented this to you, uh we did do a broad environmental scan of, you know, what Washington looks like as far as PEG services. And so what this graph figure one is showing you is um Washington State municipalities and the services that are provided. As you can see on the far left-hand side, uh the majority of municipalities have G services exclusively. And then you've got seven that have P, you've got three that have the full PEG, and um I will make a note that this includes Lacey, Olympia, and Thurston, or excuse me, Tumwater.
So we're the, we make up the full PEG, the only ones?
Correct, correct. Well, and so this is, this is an initial scan, so I'm gonna pull my inner Troy here and say, I don't wanna give you a one hundred percent guarantee, but based off of the information we're seeing, we are one of uh the few jurisdictions uh here collectively in Thurston County that provide full pay, and there's also um a combination of public and government. So I showed you this slide as well, but I think it's important just to take a look at um jurisdictions that are relatively co- close to the city of Lacey. So what I'm showing you here are um jurisdictions here in Washington between forty-one thousand and a hundred thousand. Um I've highlighted Lacey here in the middle, so I'd like to say that these are kind of our peer jurisdictions when we're doing comparisons. And what you can see is uh the types of PEG services that are provided for our peer jurisdictions. That is a hard one to say uh five times fast right there. But the thing I wanna point out is that there are only five uh jurisdictions here out of the twenty that I'm showing you that provide uh something in addition or PEG, excuse me, public uh um access in addition to government access. You can see there's also combinations of education and government on that list, but five out of the twenty. Uh you can also see um that uh each of, each of the jurisdictions, without, with the exception of Kennewick, which I couldn't find any information on, have franchise fees uh for cable services. And then uh utility taxes, the majority of these peer jurisdictions also apply utility tax on their cable franchises.
Is the N for Lakewood means they don't do any of them?
Correct, correct. Yes, if you're looking at Lakewood, it is a none. Yes, yep. And um Councilmember Conkle, I think last time you were curious about Puyallup. Puyallup is on the list here, and you can see that they provide government access services. So some history for our designated service provider, um TC Media has served as our designated server's provider since nineteen eighty-six. Uh they are currently under contract until the end of the year, and they provide, as we've already mentioned, all three of uh the PEGs, so public education, government services. They operate a public uh access facility, and they provide television production services for the city. So at every one of our regular meetings, for example, we have TC Media here to support uh John Coke and getting um our meetings uh out, not only on cable television, but also on our streaming services. So just some background on um our our previous contracts here with TC Media, and I've provided all this information to in uh the staff report, so if you needed uh wanna spend some more time taking a look at this, but what the gray line is showing you is what our overall TC Media contract costs have been for the last decade. Uh the blue line specifically is for our, just our contract services with TC Media, and the orange line at uh the bottom is showing you the PEG fees that go to TC Media to help provide PEG services for the city. Um when we look at our use of uh TC Media's contract again through the last uh eleven, ten-year period, um so we're looking excuse me, this is two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, not uh two thousand and eleven through to two thousand twenty-one. Um what you can see in the top light blue are the unused hours. The green represents other events, the red represents uh entertainment, and the dark blue down at the very bottom of figure three represents council meetings. So collectively, we currently contract for seven hundred hours. Um on average, over the last five years, though, we have not used around a hundred and sixty hours. I do wanna throw in the caveat there that well, we do have the pandemic, and that's exactly what I was pointing out. Twenty twenty kind of shows uh the impacts of the pandemic, but what you can see from sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and uh twenty-one is that there is still about a quarter uh that was not used during those contract years. So um something I I brought up last time, we discussed this topic as well, it's just the changing history of, uh I guess, I guess the changing environment of cable television in United States. So over the past decade, um community access television has rapidly changed. I think some, some things to note, we've had the advent of smartphones and other accessible video technologies. We've also seen the proliferation of social media platforms for communications. You know, everybody who has a smartphone now has a video camera and has some access to, you know, editing software to get videos up and broadcast. And then also the decline of public access channels and studios, like the graph I showed you previously, you know, if we were having this conversation twenty years ago, there would likely be a lot of other uh public access facilities here in Washington State. Um one of the downsides with cable is uh it's not really readily accessible who is watching. You don't get good metrics on viewership, and so you're unable to get good feedback on kind of what eyeballs are on the television. Um and at the same time, with all of the conditions I just described, more and more people are what they call cutting the cords, right? So they're going from cable to streaming services, and just to 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 really emphasize that point, a Pew Research Center uh study showed that in two thousand twenty-one, the share of Americans who say they watch television via cable or satellite has plunged from seventy-six percent in two thousand and fifteen to fifty-six percent this year. And the largest uh drop you can see here is ages eighteen through twenty-nine that went from sixty-five that went from sixty-five percent all the way down to thirty-four percent. So less people are um using cable to get access to uh TV services. And that's a trend that will likely continue moving forward. So when we look at uh Comcast PEG fees, um, what figure two is showing you uh, on the bottom, the blue bars are showing you the PEG fees that the city has collected. So again, this is the thirty cents per a month per residential subscriber. And the orange bar on top is showing you the number of subscribers, and that's what we generally think. This isn't an exact science here, but it's based off of the funds that we collected. How many people have cable subscriptions for um, you know, residential purposes? You can see the high was in two thousand and nineteen with almost eleven thousand, and we have uh declined to ten thousand here in twenty twenty-one. So just showing, I guess, that, that trend, uh like I mentioned of more people moving away from cable, although certainly not to the degree of what the Pew Research was suggesting.
Number of s- so, less than ten thousand subscribers in twenty twenty-one? For cable?
Correct, correct. And this is residential subscribers.
Within the city of Lacey?
Seriously?
And again, it's not a perfect science because we're taking the total number, but I mean, it's a, it's a ballpark number of what we're looking.
Remember, you gotta look at households, not population.
Right, right, right. It still seems low, but.
About what percent, Scott?
About fifty. I'm just thinking water accounts for about, what, twenty-five, that includes businesses? So.
Households in the, in the city where this is somewhere.
Nineteen, twenty?
Wow, I've had DirecTV my entire time.
Have you?
We don't have cable more, yeah? I mean, we could, we just don't.
So uh, something I certainly wanted to highlight and celebrate, and I think this goes back to that we never point out all of the good things uh that we're doing, or we need to remind, excuse me, I learned uh, remind. Um, is that we have been regional leaders in government transparency. Um, and in the last couple of years, and I just wanna thank the Public Affairs Team as re- as well as the rest of uh the city departments, we've been able to expand our access to public meetings. So currently, all of our public meetings are live and available for people to access on our YouTube channel as well as Facebook Live. We have all of our council meetings and other prominent meetings that we might be holding. And then we have all of our council meetings also um streamed on demand on our legislative system, which uh some of you have learned and that we're gonna be phasing out here uh in the near future. And for the rest of you, that's coming, it's coming soon. Um, but Granicus, you can access all of those services, and that would certainly be part of a future legislative agenda system as well, where that would be on demand and available to call up. Um, so the city has done a really great job of being uh transparent and accessible and allowing individuals to access government's um meetings and other uh types of public meetings that occur.
Are we actively promoting our YouTube channel? Is that something that we're doing on a regular basis, pushing out? You know how many um subscribers we have through our YouTube channel?
Okay, I'm gonna pull another Troy Wu here, and I was looking at this the other day, it's over, um, well, actually, don't, I'll say, I'll, I'll follow up with that. I have to ask about.
That really was a Troy Wu.
I learned from the best, what can I say? Um, so what figure five is showing you here, and this is just a snapshot in time. Um, so these numbers would look very different if I pulled uh this data right now. But what you're seeing in figure five are our regular city council meetings from February of this year um to the end of April this year, so all six of the meetings that we had. And you can see where people in the community are watching um these meetings from. So the dark blue uh down here at the bottom is YouTube, which most people are going to our YouTube or to the second option, which is the red bar, which is our Facebook Live. The green um slice is Granicus, so again, our current legislative a-agenda management system. The purple is Zoom. And then the pink um, which is on March third and April seventh. And I, I recognize it was probably very hard to see in the staff report because it was a color very similar to the purple um is uh TC Media. Um, and so again, I just wanna say, this is the caveat, this is one-time poll. If we were to take a look at this again, um, this would look very differently. And I do wanna emphasize that when I say TC Media, this is actually their web uh platform. This is not cable because we cannot get good information readily accessible with cable television.
The Granicus is our website, went onto our website?
Yeah, uh, you know what? That was the number I was gonna say. Thank you, Scott. So um, we've got uh over three thousand two hundred and sixty subscribers uh for our uh YouTube.
For the YouTube?
Yes, yep. And so when you are a subscriber, just for some background on that, that also pings you when a meeting goes live. And so you know, hey, something is live and I can watch it, whether it's right when it's live or I can pull it up later.
I mean, I, I know it's anecdotal, but there, it's clear that since we've started doing our meetings, you know, live on social media platforms, we have more people. I mean, I hear from people in the public constantly now that they've watched meetings, they have, I've had questions come up from people from meetings. That didn't happen. And I was first on council, and we had TC Media, so they were on cable, but they weren't on any of these other methods. And I don't believe there were very many people watching back then, so, so this is good, this is really good.
Yeah, and again, we're doing a, a great job of getting that information out there, and we'll certainly continue to share the, the sources that we have so that people can watch our public meetings. And I think the important thing to highlight too is the on-demand element. Because, you know, it was one thing if it streamed on a cable cast, but you can now go back to any of these sources um and watch those videos on demand. So you might not have actually been able to watch, you know, the meeting in, live and in progress, or you might have loved it so much that you went back and watched my presentation again, which.
Would these, would these numbers include, uh, these would, numbers wouldn't include people that went back and watched it later, right? This would only be those who watched it live, probably, or?
No, that, this would include um people who were watching it later. So again, if we were to pull this data now, they would likely, these numbers would likely go up because individuals might have gone back. And a lot of times, um, you know, staff use these videos as well to go back and review, you know, subjects.
Unique views, these are any views.
Correct, still, correct. Yep, and so figure six is just showing you the average online views per platform over this period of time. So again, uh YouTube was where most people were going to watch uh public meetings, uh city council, regular meetings in this, in this case, and then Facebook. So like I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the city did receive one proposal from TC Media. And we had a committee of representatives from each jurisdiction review uh the proposal. So this was, you know, the city of Lacey, the city of Olympia, Thurston County and Tumwater come together and collectively review it with a scoring card. Uh, one of the things um in the review is it was, there were, was limited consideration of kind of the innovation and sustainable ways to provide PEG services. The uh response, though, did allow for à la carte selection of PEG services and production services. Um, the thing to note, though, and we'll uh get into this in a little bit more detail on the next slide, is that cost for some of the services uh were significantly higher for the same or in some cases, less services depending on the service. So just for some background, and you all have this in your staff report, this is Table D. This provides a kind of general breakdown of uh the proposal that we received. Uh, the orange bar shows, and everything under it shows government and education production and TV production. So uh you can see the costs for channels, the cost for production support. And per the à la carte request, we asked for um a breakdown of two hundred and fifty hours, five hundred, seven hundred and fifty and a thousand hours to give jurisdictions the options that would best fit uh for them for production services. It also um provided a cost for public access, so this would be for the P. This is training for adults and youth and also to get um public videos on the public access channel. Um, you can see the cost is uh under the, the purple bar. And then we also requested some additional features. Um, and again, in an à la carte approach to understand, you know, what could be a feasibility out there, and then to allow the jurisdictions to determine what uh would be services uh that they would be interested in getting. So that includes some closed captioning and then also some additional streaming uh options. So what you're seeing here in the orange bar down here is just the, the, the government and education production and TV production. So all of these items, assuming that the city was uh interested in uh contracting for five hundred hours. The purple down here uh includes the orange as well as public access. And then all services, uh the final, the teal color includes all of the above. So if the city was to get the government uh and education production and TV production, public access and those additional features. Um, and then shows, generally speaking, what the cost would be across all of the jurisdictions. So just to, to highlight here, for example, for just government production for, for Lacey, and this would include TV production hours, it's around a hundred thousand dollars. And for government and education production and uh public access, that would increase to about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And uh, one thing to clarify, this assumes that all four channels are in use. So currently, there are four channels. Um, and so that's certainly something that we would take a look at if, as part of uh uh moving forward.
What, what do you mean by the channel? So if we did it, but others didn't, that's gonna change these numbers?
Y- yeah, and so I guess, let me take a step back and just say, so we have the four channels that are currently um in use. And so one channel is for government, so the G, right? So we have uh Lacey, uh, we have Olympia, and we have Thurston County, and that is where kind of their government production. Then we have, Tumwater has their own channel currently. And then there's the, the public access channel, and then the final channel is that education channel. So um, that would assume that all four channels are still in use. Um, that could look very different, uh because again, if you are providing PEG, you don't have to provide the P, the E and the G. So those channels could be reallocated for different uses depending on each jurisdiction's need moving forward.
Can you explain the Apple TV and Roku?
Sure. Yes, so if you have smart televisions, you can download the TC Media app, and you would be able to stream uh all of the videos, yeah.
I did not know that. I need to download that.
So as part of this, and this was something we discussed in our September meeting, was that we also evaluated internal options. Um, and so we looked specifically at performing the E and the G and having television production services here in the city. Um, you know, as part of this evaluation, we do think that this could be a cost-effective solution in the future. However, I wanna say with the caveat of none of this would be able to happen overnight. There's infrastructure that would need to be considered before being able to go fully in this direction. Um, but this would allow us to provide uh G services as well as television production services and also enhance the general bandwidth of just communication here in the city, whether uh that's a combination of internal and external communications. Um, but again, that would require technology upgrades um as well as staffing resources, and this is not something that would occur before January first, twenty twenty-three. But just in this um preliminary example here in Table C, if we were to pursue this option in the future and added one FTE, we would have around uh two thousand hours every year. Uh, if we had, you know, them helping with G services at five hours per week in addition to TV production services, about ten hours a week. So not only, you know, helping with these meetings, helping record them, but then also helping facilitate um the casting of these shows on uh the cable channel. Uh, collectively, that's still around eight hundred hours. So when we're looking at um the ability to do other communication support here at the city, there would still be, you know, around twelve hundred hours that would be able to be applied to other uh communication needs. So just as an example of some of the research that we did, um, what you see here is what it would take to, again, get us ready to provide G services. So there would be some one-time costs that would be involved. We would need to get a playback server, a video switch, and then a lot of other accessories uh that would help. Uh, we'd also need to uh get a fiber transmission with Comcast so that we could directly uh provide our uh video transmissions. Um, and then we would anticipate that, you know, that would get us up, but there would be several phases in the future that could really help um additional government productions. And, you know, I'll just throw out the example of, uh, number one, we, we wouldn't have a, a, I guess, a mobile cart, right? So that the council chambers would be well-equipped to handle all of the meetings. But if we were to do public meetings elsewhere, uh, that would be something that we would anticipate in an additional phase. So we've got a couple of, of phases here throughout time, just to give some perspective of what that could look like. So there would be significant one-time costs at the first year just to get uh those services ready to be uh provided. There would also be um staffing resources to consider. This would be bringing on a, another uh FTE position. Um, but we do think that, you know, with a combination of general fund uh reserves and then PEG, that this again could be a sustainable solution moving forward for government services. And I'll pause here to see if there's any questions on this slide. I know there's a lot of uh line items here.
I'm skipping forward in the presentation, but it sounds like your proposal or recommendation is to explore this internal option in the future. So in the coming years, we would explore whether this works for us. If we did this, we could still offer some community services and support. Right? Because a part of PEG is access from the public for learning how to do videography or doing communication. Would this allow for those services, or would this just be for city communications?
So I, I will say that yes, PEG services can be used for public access. But again, you, you do not need to provide all three of those services. You could just provide E and G or just G exclusively and still receive the PEG funding from uh uh Comcast. But to your point, um, yes, there could be options in the future to, so.
Certainly, it's as for the public.
Yes, yep. Certainly could be uh future conversations as, continue the evaluation of this.
Yeah. Has this been looked at through an equity lens in terms of how it might affect other third-party population from one way or the other?
So um, Councilmember Cox, um, this has not gone before like the Commission on Equity. Um, one of the things that we did ask as part of our, our RFP, though, was for uh potential providers to talk about their commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, but this i- is not something that we have brought in front of the Commission or applied a equity, I guess, lens as we've done this analysis. So the recommendation, and I'm not sure why that emoji popped up there, but maybe it's saying, hey, it's eight-thirty at night, hurry, hurry this presentation up here. Um, it's, that's a bit of a surprise. Recommendation would be to proceed with a one-year contract for government and educational services only and five hundred television production support hours with TC Media in the upcoming year for twenty twenty-three, uh during which that would allow us to really analyze um how we might be able to turn to an internal option um and get a more detailed timeline and costs associated with that. Uh, that recommendation, we anticipate the cost will be somewhere between seventy-five thousand and just over a hundred thousand dollars. And the advantages to that would be that we would continue to receive uh education and government services. We'd also continue to receive our production hours and close to what we assume to be what our production hours would be for the total. Uh, there would be um, you know, consideration of uh contract hours at, over the five hundred, should we go over five hundred? Um, and then it also allows us that time really to take a deeper dive into what that could look like for the city moving forward. Uh, as an alternative uh to the recommendation, um, we could try to work with TC Media on a possible one-year extension of the current agreement, which we would anticipate would cost around a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And would give us how many hours? That would be the seven hundred?
Seven hundred is what we currently contract for. And so that.
Do you have questions? I'm really lonely to answer, but Shannon needs to finish her presentation.
Well, that is the end of my presentation, and so I was gonna ask if the council has any questions about any of the um materials that we just wanted.
I have a question that maybe you can answer better than, than we could, and if we go forward with this, including our, the other jurisdictions that are part of two.
Well.
We want to look to the.
I, I do wanna recognize Shannon for the report because it was very thorough. Um, I would also offer that we have, we have a, there's a PEG center in Kelso Longview, very similar to us. Um, so I just wanted to add them to your list. Um, we were TC, TC Media was, um, when we received the RFP, we were surprised that it was crafted in such a way that. we were surprised that it was crafted in such a way that the public access piece of it was secondary to the overall service provision. Um and the um the recommendation to go with just government services from our perspective would eliminate support for public utilization of our resources. And I would say that in the the chart that you saw, the table that she laid out, the public access dollar amount includes the operation of the production facility that we make available to the community to use um over on the west side. So um we believe that the public's, the public access is important and that um community residents need to have access to communication tools and distribution platforms. And yes, everybody does have a camera in their pocket, but there's only so much you can do with that. Um I would offer that when uh working with a uh in an allocation of hours for production services, um productions are sometimes a one person show, but oftentimes many people need to be involved in a production, depending on what's going on. And facilities and resources uh can be varied. You can do a lot in this room with the cameras that are on the walls. We can do a lot of different things in a studio environment um or out in the field with multiple cameras or single cameras. So it would um certainly limit uh the community's access to communication resources um and would have a significant impact on us. When we looked at the RFP relative to innovative and sustainable ways to provide our services, that I wasn't really a hundred percent sure how to answer those questions primarily because when you do a production, it costs a certain amount of money. When you teach a class, you have people in a room. Um we've utilized a lot of different kinds of resources, online training through Zoom primarily uh from pandemic impact, those kinds of things. But um you know, and we we as an organization are looking at ways to diversify revenue beyond the ways we already do that. So um I guess I'm saying all of that in that um we would welcome the opportunity to have another year to really talk about how this would roll out in a different uh potentially different structure. Um and welcome the, and we're we're pleased to see that there was an alternative uh for a suggestion for an extension of contract. Um so we would certainly welcome that. Um I would share that our proposal um was based, um the increases in the cost that we presented in our proposal were driven almost a hundred percent by our desire to pay our staff a living wage. And that um over many years, um we uh the our staffing uh wage and salary structure um has been lacking. And when we were given the opportunity to kind of take a look from this RFP perspective, which basically said we're gonna start from the ground up and see what it looks like. Um we, the the increase in the cost that we saw were directly driven by making sure that our staff had living wages.
How how many um hours a year does you provide for public access? I mean, what's the average use of your studios throughout the year?
Um, well, it's kind of last few years, it's been, you know, it's been limited. Um I would have to look back at a report um thousands of hours of equipment reservations, studio use. Um we program on across all four channels uh in most years in excess of fifteen thousand hours of programming, which is original programming plus repeats. Um so I could certainly get you that information, what it looked like over the last few years. Um
I'm just curious of. You break up through ZipCo like people.
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. Yeah.
I'm I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Hearing that number. Cause I I I do know like the what the League of Women's Voters use you and so on.
Yeah, Veterans for Peace, you know, Chambers of Commerce have used us. Um certainly the faith community finds a place uh in our facility and on our channels. Um and those are, you know, the activist community, the uh social justice community has used our facilities and resources. Um use use our facilities and resources.
Six pretty substantial groups.
So um and those and those would all fall under the public access side of things. So.
A year, we're talking what a maybe a savings of thirty or forty thousand maybe.
But um twenty thousand if that.
Yeah, our current uh our current contract the for twenty twenty three was about a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And that included all of the government support and all of public access and the channel management. And also things that we've rolled out as services that we felt were important, like the twenty four seven streaming of the channels and um captioning, we're now doing captioning on all of the channel three and channel seventy seven programming that's produced by TC media. Um so those are services we're currently providing and are just looking, you know, when we answered the RFP, we attach the cost associated to those. So.
So then has the other jurisdiction committed to what they're going to do or partner with?
No, um Tom Water and Olympia have both um extended the contract for different periods of time. We have not um had a conversation with the county yet.
They both extended the existing contract?
They they, yeah, um Tom Water extended for six months and the city of Olympia extended for ninety days um primarily because their meeting schedule is pretty much done. And the and the year end is here. So um we'll see how quickly we can get through that process.
But another cost driver is the lease though, cause that's a new dynamic in the.
That's a new dynamic, yeah. And that was, you know, the result of the last cable franchise is that we now are required to pay the lease on the and we've been paying that lease for a year. So um while that is certainly an expense that we um have assumed, it was not a primary driver for increases in costs in this RFP. We've already absorbed, you know, we're working on that. So.
I was a little pleasure. Could you give us a quick broad brush of what TC media is vision envisioning for the future and how how you might.
Yeah.
Technology with.
Well.
Goals that.
I would say the challenges for us are the same challenges that every media organization is having. Um multiple ways for eyeballs to find your content uh and and making sure that we're on all of those platforms. So that is the big thing is moving yeah enhancing our our uh digital presence online, making sure that those resources are easily available. Um we are um looking to monetize things that we've never monetized in the past because we now have uh like, you know, um for example, potentially using our facility as a venue, um because now we have a lease that we feel comfortable that we can do that with. So um.
So can I can I make a recommendation? Did you say that Thurston County extended you for six months?
Thurston County had, we haven't talked to them. Tom Water extended for six months, city of Olympia extended for ninety days.
Yeah, maybe it'd feel more comfortable if we extend, find a way to extend ours for six months. And so then we can really.
All existing provisions. Yeah.
With and then let's, we need to have a meeting with the region to see what's gonna, what's gonna happen here. Um and I think that'd be my recommendation is just let's, let's extend for six months and and really um I've not, I I think what we almost need to do is 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 bring the region together uh and and have these conversations. It's so hard to have it. You know, maybe bring up some represents, representatives together to have have this discussion with the other jurisdictions on on what we're gonna do going forward. Cause um it doesn't make any sense for us to go on way if the other, if the other jurisdictions go, you know, feels like we need to be in this together, one way or the other.
And I appreciate that because his, I mean historically, now there, you know, Shannon's right, you could conceivably step out and do this. The way the franchises are written, there's channel capacity. Um but the way the community peg uh service provision has grown over the last thirty six years is as a combined resource. Um that does develop, where there has a, an economy of scale has been developed because of that, that, you know, if all the jurisdictions went their own way, they could certainly do services or or have programming and, you know, channel capacity, but not necessarily what the community has had over the last thirty six years. So and we're we're, you know, we as an organization are willing to you know, pull our fair share of the weight. Um but we just, we really would like to have an opportunity to have some really thoughtful conversations about what that looks like going forward.
Is my my motion is to extend it for six months. Is is there a second? Is there any discussion? Yes, what's gonna?
Well, that would be a discussion with TC media, but.
Uh yeah, but basically what's happened has been just an extension of all the existing provisions. So it basically just a change in the term, which has been seemed to be the easiest thing to do. So it depends, I think it depends on the jurisdiction, cause everybody deals with it a little differently.
I'm sure you can figure that out and bring it before us.
Absolutely.
Okay, all the, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think to like to say from the record that first TC TV and then it's evolved into TC media has just been a wonderful gift to our community, um and our county. And rather than, from my perspective, worrying about all the cities that aren't doing the full peg, I'd like to look at ourselves as leaders and trend centers that the others should be emulating. So.
I I I do really think that we need to get together with Tom Order, Olympia, and the county and have some heart hearts on 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 what our level. I I I'm proud that we have peg, all three, right? Um, you know, of course, I I grew up in a different era when um, you know, local access was a big deal. Um I'd love for us to get back to, I remember funny guy on the prowl, you know? Um so uh there's, there's a lot of good things that can happen. Um it's uh, you know, I and I think we're a special community because of it. So but that being said, we need to get on the same page with the other jurisdictions, cause I think this works at an economy of scale. Doesn't look, you know, it's a lot more difficult if we try to do it on our own.
Totally agree with you there.
And I'd add too, I mean, there's a recognition that technology and how we consume media and social media and our ability to do things that we could do twenty years ago is completely changed. So we did mention a thoughtful discussion, that needs to be part of that real discussion. Well, yeah, it's one thing to be able to make a video, it's other thing to be able to get that video online into uh a, you know, media that where it can be seen without, you know, having a thousand friends and blah blah blah. So there's, there's, there's a lot to be discussed and I, whatever. Is is there any other discussions?
I just wanna thank Shannon for all the support she put in.
And I really do think, I and I, I, you know, I I appreciate your proposal. I um the region needs to get together and have this discussion and and really, um and I look forward to helping out with that discussion.
My only question would be, do we wanna do six months or do we wanna just go with Shannon's alternative, which is a year and give Shannon or people enough time to really do the work to figure that out?
I think since Tom Waters extended six months, um I think.
But Olympia only did ninety days.
I know, but at least it will, I think it will. We're gonna have some conversations with the regions to figure where out. I think this sets at least the minimum of where we're at.
I'm fine with that. We can always do another six month extension at the end of six months.
It gives us an opportunity to kind of, I mean, we're trying to figure out our budget too. So at least now we have something.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? So now bye bye, say nay. Anyone opposed?
I don't know Scott if I'm gonna see you again. I mean. Wanna like share that Scott has has been a a true friend to, uh well, to me and to TC media over the years. Um uh when Greg Kewio was the uh city manager and Scott was the the assistant, we had many conversations about contracts in those days. And I just wanna thank you for your service to Lacey uh and wish you the very, very best in your new endeavors. So.
Appreciate that.
Is that really?
Thank you so much. Well, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. We are going to be adjourning to a closer, to a low session. Um but the rest of our viewing um audience, um I'll always be in your turn.